Is that on here? What is this? All right, well, it's just the pledge anyway, so we'll just go with it. All right. Good morning, everyone. We may or may not, oh, we are on. All right, there we go. Today is Tuesday, August 19th. This is a regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners from Manatee County. We are going to start, as we always do, with our invocation and the pledge. Our invocation will be led by Pastor Brock Patterson of Longboat Island Chapel, and our pledge will be led by our own Megan Thorpe, who just finished working with Doge for our Financial Management Department, who was in the Navy and had been stationed in New Orleans, Washington, DC, San Diego, and elsewhere, and comes from a long family of service members, including a husband, mother, father, sister, and brother. And she says it's an honor to have served, and she is now, she's very happy to be serving the citizens of Manatee County. So, thank you very much for your service and for being here, but we will start with Pastor Patterson. Please rise if you're able.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks for this day and for all the blessings that you have already bestowed upon us. Lord, you're always looking out for us, and you're always giving us an opportunity to do a little bit better, and we thank you for that this day. Lord, we also thank you for all of those who are taking care of us, or the men and women in our fire departments, police departments, emergency personnel, and of course, the members of our armed forces, Lord, wherever they may be serving. We thank you for the sacrifice that all of these people make, so that our presence here can be possible. Thank you for that, and we just ask that you bless our time together. Help us to do the very best we can in your service. We pray this in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Please be seated. County Minister, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. All updates were published with the online agenda.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask for some clarifications, please. What time was item 35 put on the agenda?
I'm not aware. I was off on Friday. I assume it was put on before 5:00 on Thursday, but I don't know the exact time.
Okay. And what time was it? And what time was it published, so that the public can see it?
I believe, sir, that's Monday afternoon.
Okay. I have the actual dates. It's sent Thursday at 12:34, and it was published Friday at 3:50 PM for the public's notice. I have a motion at this time concerning the agenda, because we seem to have problems with the agenda, and, you know, a lot of people have, even on this issue itself, people have accused us of late notice, and, you know, comments have been made that, you know, there was a problem with late notice. So, I'm going to make a motion to postpone for a definite time due to improper title and violation of Robert's Rules of Order. The postpone to a certain time motion allows the Assembly to delay consideration of a main motion to a specific future date. I move to postpone the consideration of the main motion on the board regarding agenda item number 35 to a definite time due to violation of format until the procedure violation can be corrected and subject properly submitted. The subject is improperly titled with a motion rather than a description. The contract should be under Public Works and brought to the Commission from that department. Mr. Butzow is absent today, so, you know, this would be fine on September 2nd. This is not a Commissioner Agenda Item. Pursuant to Section 4.4.3, there is no discussion submitted as required. It only states, "NA." It states, "Not reviewed, no apparent legal issues despite a potential sunshine law violation." Purpose of this motion is to postpone to allow this body to comply with its own bylaws and Robert's Rules of Order. Responsible governance postponing this item demonstrates our commitment to transparency, accountability, and adherence to the laws governing public bodies in Florida. This action will allow us to proceed with confidence, knowing that our actions are legally sound and in the public interest. So, I move that now.
I'll say it.
I can't tell if anyone's on the board or not. We have a motion by Commissioner McCann to postpone item number 35. A second by Commissioner Bearden. I do not have anybody on the board. I'm not going to require a supermajority to have this, because it's procedural thing, so I will allow the motion. Since it is a motion, I will open this up to public comment. Are there any public comments on this motion? No. It's simply on the motion relative to item number 35 about postponing item number 35, not on the board.
Glenn Gableena, for the record, thank you, Dr. Bob, for pointing that out. This has gone on long enough. I mean, you guys keep sliding stuff in at the last minute, second, third, fourth revisions. If we don't have seven days, it doesn't go on the agenda. It's not rocket scientist. I need, you know, we all have jobs, so when we want to look at the agenda and do a little research, I don't think the proper notice is that impossible to do. You should respect the citizens of this county. Give us an opportunity to do a dive, deep dive, shell dive, whatever, but stick by the Robert Rules of Order, and certainly, respect the citizens of this county who pay your salaries to get us the proper notice, and these last-minute add-ons are unacceptable. So, thank you, Dr. Bob.
Any other public comment on the continuance alone, not on the subject matter of the item? Seeing none, and no one's on the phone, I will close public comment. I will simply point out, since I see the agenda stuff in real time as Chair, the first conversation about this round about being brought back a couple of months ago was a Commissioner Agenda Item. It was not a Public Works Item, so if this was intended, if this was supposed to be a Public Works Item, then that one should have been a Public Works Item as well. Second point is, this was submitted within the timeframe this board agreed to. I have allowed many Commissioner comments to, or Commissioner Agenda Items to come in on Fridays from everybody up here on this board, including the motioner and the seconder, who have submitted things on Friday afternoons, and they have been allowed to be heard. So, if the determination is it needs seven days per Mr. Gableena, then everybody on this board at some time or another has violated that timeframe. This was done within the timeframe given by this board, and I have done so with as little information as this has. I have had Commissioner Gen, I've had Commissioner Agenda Items come in with no information, where I had absolutely no idea what we were going to talk about, and when we implored the Commissioners to provide information, they flat-out refused to do so, and we still allowed them on this agenda. If this board wants more time, more allowable time, and saying it's seven days, and wants real information, all which I tried to install into the rules that was voted on, then this board needs to honor it themselves, too, and not just use it when it's convenient against other Commissioners. I try to give everyone the same fair shake. This was put in at the same time as other ones were, with the same information other ones were. So, it is what it is. We're opening it up for a vote later today. If this does not pass, I have Commissioner Bearden on the board.
I guess the main point is that, and we've had this discussion, I think we had this same discussion, what, like, a few weeks ago? What are we going to do? I mean, if we're going to, we can't cherry pick, right? So, you know, if this was a, you know, something regarding the Second Amendment, you'd probably fight against it, you know, like you did last time, you know, because I threw it on last minute. I'm just saying, that's the reality of it.
But you did.
I know, that's what I'm saying. So, I mean...
You don't seem to care about the topic.
Yeah, no, but my point is, but my point is, is I think that if this is the case, and we're, you know, we as a board are going to decide whether or not, when we're going to put agenda items on, I think it just needs to be fair across the board. If this is the case, and we're deciding that we're going to do it this way, well, then that's for every item. That's not, let's not, you know, cherry pick, you know, which items and bring, you know, up to the board whether or not we believe this should be on the agenda or not. I'm just saying, let's just be fair across the board with it.
And I 100% agree with you, which is why I'm not cherry picking this one out, because I've allowed you to put items on on Friday afternoon, and it would not be fair to Commissioner Ron to prevent him and cherry pick out his motion if I've allowed your motion. So, I thank you for agreeing with me, and I'm questioning why you seconded this, if what you just said is what you actually believe. Commissioner Phelps.
I understand procedurally, we've all strayed. I don't recall when I've put anything on the agenda at the last minute, but we set some rules back in January. We've all erred from our intent of this. I do go back to what our chairman actually said about deferring to the Commissioner for the district, in which this is an issue. I think that we have some, we brought up some transparency issues, some accountability issues. Without Mr. Butzow being here today, I don't think that that gives staff a fair shake. Right now, it's a topic that needs a little bit of cooling off. We have too much involved in this, I'll just say, with personalities and egos. So, why don't we take a moment to let a hot topic settle down a little bit, get our facts together, and give this a fair shake to everyone before it just becomes a, it's something that it doesn't need to be. So, I would like to ask Mr. Ron if he would like to give this a fair shake at a later time, when cooler heads will reveal, and we'll be able to look at the facts and make a good decision, versus rushing into something that we all know there's a lot of issues right now that we need to all get over, so that we could face this with clear minds and doing the right thing for both parties. Thank you.
Would you like for me to respond to you?
No, darling.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner McCann.
Sounds like Commissioner Ron wants to respond, so I will give him the floor, and I can speak afterwards.
No, I'm responding to Commissioner Phelps's request, and I do not honor her request. There's nothing else to discuss. We're getting off topic on the motion, so the question needs to be called.
Well, this, I'm not going, nobody seconded your request to call, and you didn't have the floor. There's only one person left to speak. I'm not going to prevent Commissioner McCann from speaking on his own motion to call a question one person early, so Commissioner McCann.
I'll draw that.
This is a very hot topic right now, and I'm trying to protect the county. This has nothing to do with Mr. Jensen. This has nothing to do with, you know, personalities. The thing is, there is a sunshine violation here. I went out and I got ethics opinions, and I looked at the sunshine violation with the ethics opinions, and I will tell you that, you know, I'll just bring those up to a later date, or later in the afternoon. The thing is that, right now, we're looking at protecting the county's interests and protecting, you know, we had a very contentious last meeting, that was obvious, and, you know, I'm glad that, you know, you wanted to champion the motion, because, you know, the funny thing is that the Jensen letter focused on you. You made a motion on the 5th that said specifically that you wanted a full board when you know that all you need is a quorum to conduct business. You know, during the 5th meeting, you were actually texting one of the trolls out there looking for ethics violations on us. I witnessed the texting. As far as...
Mr. Chair, this has nothing to do with this motion. I mean, if he wants to accuse me or something, if you want to accuse me of ethical violation, file it. You know, I find it rich that you're talking about Robert's Rules of Order yet. We'll get into my, we'll get into my comments later. I'm not going to do it with you, but...
Everyone, we have a motion on the floor to continue. If I'm going to prevent the public from speaking on the topic, then I'm going to prevent you from speaking on the topic, and you from speaking on the topic. This is a dialogue and discussion relative to whether or not we are going to continue this item or have this discussion later. If we have it later, we can have this discussion later, because that's germane to the topic. This conversation is not germane to anything associated with sitting up here in any point in time during the course of this meeting, much less this motion. So, I have a motion by Commissioner McCann. I have a second by Commissioner Bearden. The motion is to continue item number 35 to a time certain on September 2nd. There is nobody else on the floor. The public has had an opportunity to speak. You can cast your votes now. And that motion fails 3 to 4, with Commissioners Phelps, McCann, and Bearden in favor, and Commissioners Cruz, Ballard, Siddique, and Ron in opposition. That item number 35 will be heard at the end of today's meeting. At that time, I will be...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put this into the record for the meeting, along with the attachments that I have.
And with that, I will recess this meeting to go into our Port Authority meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have my bell with me, but ding ding. I'm calling to order the Manatee County Port Authority Agenda for meeting for August 19, 2025. Is there any public comment regarding the port?
For the record, Glenn Gadfie Gableena, the last time we were up here, we talked about solar panels over at the port, and we've, I got some deflection instead of correction from this board and the Port Authority that says, you know what? We don't own all those buildings. Well, I went to, I went to the property appraiser. You do own all these buildings. So, I just took one small building, this one, right there. It has 193,000 square feet. You could put 9,000 panels on there, but for somehow, we can't do it, right? Oh, the roof is shaky, blah, blah, blah. Well, let me, let me add to that as well. These are just two licenses that I hold. One is a certified building contractor in this state, and the other one is a roofing contractor license certified in this state. One square foot, 200 pounds per square foot is what we go up there and we put on these commercial roofs, which, by the way, are a lot stronger than residential roofs. So, why, why we don't have that? I would like to see the engineer report if these buildings are so shaky that they can't handle a 3x5 panel, which, by the way, comes out to about 15 pounds a square foot. So, when you deflect and say, oh, they're not safe, we can't do it, show me. Show me the engineer report. I'm a licensed roofer. If that's what it is, I'll abide by that. Other than that, you know, it's like the program, keep coming back. The other thing I want to mention is, we never got, I never got an answer on the financial integrity of the $500,000 loss. I've asked several times, and I'm going to keep coming back until it's done, whether, whether the, whether that affected the bottom line of the port. Last thing. Why don't we have any call-ins at the port when you have meetings?
Say again?
Why don't we have any call-ins at the port at the meeting?
Because we're not required to do that at the port.
Really? Is it, is open to the public?
It's something we're not entertaining. It's something we're not entertaining.
Listen, I want to reclaim my time. Here's the thing. You should have it. It should be televised. It's a public meeting. It's the same board, right?
No, it's not the same board.
It's the same five people. So, here's what I think. New Jersey does it, right? New Jersey, I think we should have, like, the exchange program for port directors. We'll send Carlos to New Jersey. We'll get this guy from New Jersey that says, we can put it anywhere, and bring him down here, and spend, spending $85,000 a month, a million dollars a year. In five years, that port would be at net zero. So, please, quit deflecting and start correcting, for the record.
Thank you, sir. Another public comment with regards to the port. Seeing none, I close public comment. Next up is consent agenda. Good morning, Mr. Carlos Pecaris, Director of the Port. Huh? Oh, I just thank God I don't do anything like New Jersey does. But are there any items that need to be pulled from the Port Authority on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll move to, I'll take a motion to accept consent. Thank you. I got a motion to accept consent by Commissioner Siddique, and seconded by Commissioner Ballard. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. Thank you again. We want to make a correction on Budget Resolution Agenda Item 3C to show that in lieu of the $995,000 under budget, or cashing the amount of $645,000, so from 995-000 to 645-000. That's already been changed, but I wanted to reflect on the record.
All right, thank you.
So, today, we have Agenda Item 4, which is regarding the budget for next year. I want to make a few introductory comments. We again continue to exceed prior year revenues. Our expenses have gone up a little bit, because we're planning to implement a crane department that will allow us to bring in additional revenues to offset the investment we have made in our new port cranes. Towards that, we are monitoring tariffs. We're monitoring imports coming in. It's starting to stabilize a little bit, and we're using our foreign trade zone to be able to offset some of the concerns of the importers on essential commodities, particularly. So, otherwise, I think at this time, having done the consent agenda... agenda, I'm going to have Denise Duffelbeam, our CFO, come up and make the presentation for next year's budget.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Denise Duffelbeam, Director of Business Administration and Finance. I have an extremely short budget presentation as the budget has already been previously reviewed. I'll go over the highlights of our revenue and expenses and then turn it over to Dan Fitzpatrick, who will discuss our CIP. For, for fiscal year 26, we're proposing 34.6 million in operating revenue. That's a 17% increase over this year. We are budgeting an increase in our waterborne revenue due to expected volume growths in Jews and also, okay.
You're good.
I'm done, okay.
I'm still good.
Okay. And also our dry bulk commodities. And as Carlos just mentioned, we are launching a new revenue stream. For the very first time, we will be renting our mobile harbor cranes. Anticipated gross revenue of $5 million. The current third-party contractor that does our crane operations, their contract expires September 30th and we've opted to take over the crane department and manage the rental of the cranes. That goes into effect October 1. So we have preparations well underway for the startup of that new revenue stream. For, for expenses, we're proposing 24.1 million. It's a 33% increase or $6 million. The key drivers of this increase are six new positions, five in the newly established crane department and one in security. It's an IT assistant. We are also budgeting for some deferred maintenance items, roof repairs on some of our key facilities as well as HVAC upgrades, condensers and evaporators in a couple of our chill warehouses. There's an insurance increase. It's not really a surprise based on 24 hurricane season increase of 27%. And we're also budgeting for enhanced security coverage with a third party. They'll help out during peak periods as well as special events. And that's all I have. If there are any questions, if not, I'll turn it over to Dan Fitzpatrick.
Are there any questions of the CFO? Seeing none, thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Do you want to put it on?
Good morning. Dan Fitzpatrick, Director of Planning and Project Development at Seaport Manatee. Seaport Manatee is Southwest Florida's primary seaport and the mission of Seaport Manatee is to be an economic catalyst for Southwest Florida and we achieve this by creating more than 40,000, 42,000 jobs and generating more than $275 billion annually in state and local taxes and contributing more than $7.1 billion to United States economy. And so how we do this at the port is we collect revenues from services that are provided at the port, by the port and by our port partners. And they, our port partners create jobs and then every single dollar that the port collects, we reinvest to maintain infrastructure and build new capacity. And so our master plan that we adopt, that the port adopted in 2022, provides a long-range vision for the port and identifies approximately 30 major projects that the port needs to undertake to maximize its economic impact. And then annually, we propose a capital improvement plan to the board and then for the next fiscal year, we work on that capital improvement plan. And over time, we incrementally implement the, the master plan. And so as of this year, we've started 16 out of the 25 major projects identified in our master plan and several of those are on this list. And at any given time, the port is working on approximately 20 projects and this list up here on the screen is, are some of those major projects. And for today, I'm gonna touch on three of these projects and I'm, I'm happy to touch on more if, if there's interest. The first one is our container yard expansion. We're currently working on phase three of our container yard and we started this process three years ago and we finished the federal permitting process last month and we're approximately 50% done with design and a year from now, we'll be under construction and that project will add about 16 acres to the container yard. Next big one is railroad capacity projects. We have seen demand for rail capacity go through the roof over the last four years and today we're, we're sending about 90 cars a week and there's demand to send another 90 cars immediately. And to keep up with that demand and take some of the trucks off the road and improve the safety of the Florida transportation system, we're implementing some improvements at our mainline rail yard and also some internal improvements. And then skipping back up one line, birth, design, and engineering. Thanks to our support from our congressional delegation, including Senator Rick Scott and Congressman Vern Buchanan and others, we were successful in drawing down a fiscal year 2024 port infrastructure development program in the amount of $10.3 million. And with this funding, we're gonna modernize all of the, we're gonna design and permit the modernization of all the docking facilities at the port. And once these facilities are rebuilt, we're, we're gonna design them to last for more than 50 years. So this, these docking facilities, once we modernize them, will continue to give back to the Southwest Florida economy for the next 50, 75, 100 years. So we're, these are some really great projects we're working on and, and with that, I'll, I'll see if there's any questions. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Dan? Commissioner Siddique.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the port received a $20 million appropriation this year. I'm just curious, how quickly can we put that into action?
We're-
Thank you.
For land expansion. Thank you. So we're currently have already spent some of that money that, that we got and I'm, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about another 20 million.
How many you got? Can I have some, please?
Thank you. We, thank you. We, we, we get a lot of great support from the Florida Department of Transportation and we also have gotten a lot of great support from our congressional delegation in DC. And, you know, one of the, we did, this board did sign a grant in January for a little bit over $16 million in state money and the match puts it well over 20. And, and we're gonna be investing that money immediately into birth modernization activities. We, for every single foot, when you rebuild a dock, it costs about $50,000 a foot. And if you want to build a really good dock for a boat, it costs about, they're a thousand feet long if you build them right. So that's $50 million to build one of these. And we need to do some modernization around the port so that, so we're, we're, we're putting that work, that money to work immediately. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions of Dan? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Alright, so what we'll do for item resolution number four, I'm looking for a motion to move the fiscal year 2025, 2026 port authority budget forward.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Siddique.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Felce. First by Commissioner Siddique and second by Commissioner Felce. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Mr. Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. No, no other comments at this time.
Alright, thank you very much. Any Commissioner comments?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Felce.
I don't know if, I'm sorry. I don't know if this was available, Glenn, out in the lobby, but we do have new security booths that are solar powered. A little happiness, okay?
We're trying to get there.
Thank you.
They, they were $20 million.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Felce. Commissioner Siddique.
I'd just like to thank port staff, deport leadership here, here because this has been a challenging year for recovery at the seaport, but also a really good one in spite of the headwinds because we received from the governor and legislature, $2 million grant earlier this year. We all did a big event there at the port and then 20 million, which is really good. You don't get, that's a very difficult amount to get. So receive $20 million shows the hard work from port staff, leadership, and showing results meriting $20 million, first of all. And then, of course, the hard work from this board to advertise it yourself, our port lobbyists, legislative delegation, of course, the governor for seeing the value in investing that much. So I'd just like to thank you and thank everyone involved. Appreciate the work there.
Thank you, sir. And I'd like to echo those comments. We have a great port staff. They work continually hard. Some days I feel like Carlos and I are dating. We're on the phone so much together every day, talking about where the port's heading, just talking about the headwinds the port faces, not just with tariffs, but with international headwinds from the IMO and other places like that, with the ships act and other thing that we're doing. We have solid lobbyists in DC that come to our defense and we have great state lobbyists that work very hard for us. So they're doing a great job keeping this port moving. This is a very active port, a port of significance. Everyone knows, I don't want to keep saying this, but we are a port, the closest port to the Panama Canal and we are the closest port to Cuba. So we're a very active, active port. But thank you, Carlos, for the great job you and your team does all, every day, every day of the week, every day of the week. We operate 24/7, 365. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, if there's anything else, I will adjourn the port authority meeting. Ding ding. Back to you, Ms. Commissioner Cruz.
And we are back after an exciting port authority meeting. I will now open this up to the Commissioners for any items you wish to be pulled from consent. Hearing none, I will then open up consent to citizen comments. These are citizen comments on consent, which are items 1 through 30 something, 29. 1 through 29 on the agenda. Any comments on consent? Seeing none, and I can't see, is there any on all the phones? I don't have Zoom up. Alright, thank you. That was very old school there. Alright, then I will close Commissioner comments on consent and I will entertain motions to approve consent.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the entire consent agenda by Commissioner Ron, seconded by Commissioner Ballard. There's nothing up, so we'll just do it by voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Consent is approved unanimously, 7 to 0. I will now open up citizen comments on future agenda items. These are anything that you would like to talk about, we may talk about later, that is not currently on today's agenda. I have three people signed up, none of which is Glenn. So you're fourth. Pat, you're first.
Pat Simmons, Manatee County, please give me my four, three minutes. I brought this to the TDC yesterday. Move United is seeking host cities for national adaptive sports competition. And the reason I'm bringing it to you is that we meet all the qualifications according to what I've read. Host cities have to have accessible venues, hotel properties, be attractive vacation destinations. What could be better than Manatee having? An affordable location for families attending the Week 1 National Championship event. Places that have recently hosted it were Denver, Birmingham, Alabama, and Grand Rapids, Michigan. The events would be archery, a paratriathlon, powerlifting, shooting, swimming, and track and field, wheelchair tennis, which we could very easily adapt in this county. The only two caveats are it's a two-year commitment and also the application has to be in by August 29th. So that kind of pretty much leaves outside of it for this turnaround. This just came to me on Saturday morning, so, but please look into this. I have the information. The other thing is a sunflower. Landmark, I went to, I went to S R Q to get this, but there are no buses, even the handy bus. It's not allowed anywhere near the terminals and it's almost a quarter to a half a mile walk from the random buses sleepwalk to the terminal. There's no phone, there's no two-way communication to have somebody call and say, hey, I need help. And that's the point of this. It's for people with hidden disabilities to be able to get help at the airport and around the community. We have the people to make a difference in this place. We can do better. Let's do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. John, you're up. And then Mike's after you and then we'll say Glenn is fourth.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Agnelli, Manatee County. So in having conversations with our young people about the curfew, one of those benefits that I know I wasn't even thinking about is some of them were talking about how they can use the curfew as a scapegoat to going out with their friends and doing things they just don't want to do without the peer pressure clobbering them. So I thought that was a positive piece to them to be able to use that, you know, in some of the maybe more difficult conversations. My only question is, is, and it came up from them in, in our, you know, conversations, is an opportunity for youth voice. And so if we can please look at that for January, getting a group of our youth together so that when conversations like this come up, they can have some input, even if it's just through assessment, but an opportunity for them before they become, you know, members of our community from a voting perspective and things of that nature, that we're really getting their input into the community they live in. Thank you.
Mike Meehan, Manatee County. I'm talking about finances for Manatee County this morning. You may not know this figure, but your average surplus since 2017 has been 271 million. You don't have really a spending problem. Your spending has been averaging about 8% increase per year, but you do have a revenue problem. The revenues have been going up 14.1% a year. As a result, you've had these large surpluses accumulating over time. To bring the revenues more in line with the expenses, I'm suggesting cut the millage. more in line with the expenses, I'm suggesting cut the millage. A 1-mill cut would cost 64.1 million and bring current year's surplus down to 117.3 million from 181.4 million through the end of June. A 2-mill cut would cost 128.2 million and bring your surplus down to 53.2 million through the end of June. So, you'd actually be approaching a balanced budget for this fiscal year. The second problem is that unrestricted cash is 125 million roughly, and is $528 million above what you're allowed to hold by Florida statute. To show how cash-heavy the balance sheet is, the business current ratio is 9.75 of your current liabilities. So, you got almost 10 times more cash than you're going to spend based on your current liabilities on the business side. Governmental, it's an unbelievable number here, almost 22 times your current year liabilities. Most companies that have a current ratio of 2 are considered to be in really good financial shape. So, that's how far above the standard deviation you are on this metric. My solution is a 25% tax rebate, which would cost 109.7 million and leave unrestricted cash at 715 million. A 50% tax rebate would cost 219.4 million and leave unrestricted cash at 605, 605.4 million, still way above what you're allowed to hold by Florida statute. If you want to make the governor happy, a 100% rebate would cost 439.4 million, which is what you've collected in property taxes so far this year. This would still leave unrestricted cash of 385.4 million, which is still 88.4 million above Florida statute. Thank you.
And after the speaker, there's nobody else on the list. So, anyone else who wants to give public comment, it'll just be first come, first served after this.
For the record, Glenn Gaffly-Jabulina. So, you know, we talk about agenda items, and you discuss your bad behavior up there. We don't care. I don't care if you want to put it on the last minute, two days in advance, gun rights. That's got to stop. It's got to stop now. You know, I go outside, and I try to sign in 15 minutes before. You're locked out of the system. I think you should adopt the same policy. Seven days from the agenda, locked out of the system. If the public can't review it for at least a week and do our homework, well, locked out of the system. You got it out there in the hallway, why not here, right? So, let's talk about solar panels. You know, you've got a great maintenance facility, a 301 in Tel Aviv. I go to the post office there two, three times a week. I live five blocks from it. You've got a great south-facing roof. I'll pull the records on that FP now bill, too. What about the new sheriff's maintenance facility, right? What about that? Have we even considered? Is it in any of our building plans on the new buildings that we do? Just a question. If not, it should be. Yes, in God's backyard, that is a great, that's, that was a great bill that was passed. I want to congratulate Ms. Ballard again on Nixon. What a, what a, what a great purchase of, of that property. I do want to talk about, you know, I, I pulled a permit for a water meter last year, and shortly after, I said, you know, I'm on social security. I get less than $1,000 a month. I need financing. Oh, we'll get it on the agenda. You guys put on things on the agenda the night before the meeting, and I'm going on 11 months, and I've yet to see my financial agreement to pay for the $6,000 impact fee for my water meter. When I went down to the 59th Street and I asked them, I filled out all the paperwork. Oh, don't worry about it, Mr. Jabulina. We'll get it on there. It's been a year. Don't worry about it. I saved up enough money to pay in cash now, so, but that needs to be corrected, right? That's what I'm thinking. The other thing I want to say is I have been appointed to the Suncoast Community of Care on the homeless property, June 18th. I am now at the at-large seat, so I'm very proud of that, and I hope we can do some great things with that as well. So, I'm looking forward to working with that board. Great meeting that we had, and thank you. I do want to say one thing. We have an Ahab agenda here that speak on, so if we can move on to that when my time is out, it'll be about 30 seconds, and I got to go back to work. So, I'll leave it to your discretion.
I'm sorry. What was the request?
The Affordable Housing Board meeting wanted me to speak about a, some information that we wanted to bring in front of the board. So, you want to hear from the advisory boards. I'm the spokesman for that.
Sure. It's supposed to be requested on here. I put it on the agenda. How long is your presentation? Only because there's other people behind you for public comment, I don't want to hold them up either, so.
30 seconds.
30 seconds. I'll give you 28.
Okay. So, at the last meeting, Intel was there, you know, he's part of, he's part of that initiative. So, I think that's great. So, on August 11th, we met. The committee recommended that the Board of County Commissioners proceed with a consultant to prepare proposal for the implementation of form-based code. We should do it in the whole county. I think you need to put it out there for bid. I would strongly suggest John Osborne, because that guy is a guru on, on sustainability and form-based code. The city of Bradenton has it. A lot of other counties have it. We need to move forward, not little bits and pieces. Do the whole county, just like we did with ADUs, and let's just see what happens. But, that needs to move, needs to be forward. So, I'm going to enter that into the record for the Affordable Housing Board. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thanks a lot, Glenn. Yep.
Good morning. My name is Catalina, and I am a Manatee County resident. Before I begin, I want to express how grateful I am with the accessibility in Manatee County. Living independently, without being able to drive for myself with no wheelchair accessible URS around town, and where hiring an independent person or transport company is extremely expensive. Transportation is one of my biggest limitations. The ADA County Handy Bus has been a lifesaver for me. Otherwise, I would be stuck at home weeks on end or even months. This service is advertised to be offered from 5:30 a.m. till 8 p.m. However, the latest return-to-home trip I can schedule is 7 p.m. and does not run Sundays. In Anamaria Island, it runs all the way until 10:30 p.m., and it does operate on Sundays. Being a wheelchair user on the younger side of population, I would love to be able to stay out a little later as gatherings, social events, and the most beautiful sunsets happen later in the evening. I am sitting here in front of you to kindly ask you if there could be any chance that the Handy Bus schedule could be extended later in the evening, perhaps not even every day, but maybe one day a week or once every other week. According to many drivers, a big group of older folks wish they could go to church on Sundays, and on my end, I would be beyond happy to be able to watch sunsets by the water. I conclude my speech once again by thanking all the efforts from Manatee County to make it accessible, and to all the, the bus crew and their wonderful drivers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Montalvo.
I thank you. Are there any other public comments on future agenda items? Seeing none, I will close public comment since nobody's on the phone, and I have three commissioners on the board. Commissioner Ron, you are, four commissioners on the board. Commissioner Ron, you are still first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To John's point, Mr. Chair, I'd like to see if you would entertain a youth council task force with some of the youth that could be a part of that. I know, you know, advisory committees are tough to form and all those type of things, but I think if it was just a task force, it'd be really helpful with the youth. And to his point about the, about the curfew and things like that, but I was just, that's my comment, Mr. Chair, see if you'd entertain something like that.
I don't think I need to entertain that. That's a discretion of any commissioner who could advocate for a task force. That's how we ended up with an animal welfare task force. So, I would encourage you to take the lead on that.
Yes, sir.
Work with our county administrator and Debbie and whoever else to try to make that happen.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Beard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, Mike, I agree with you. We need to lower taxes. I've just got to convince, you know, a few more board members on this board so that we can continue to lower taxes. As far as the restricted funds and unrestricted funds, you know, I'd like to lobby up in Tallahassee, see what, what we can do, what policies we can put in place so that we could release and be able to dip into some of those so that we can spend them on the necessary needs of this county. I would, in hopes that maybe the board might see that as well. Maybe we do a workshop, because we are, I mean, right there. I mean, we have so much in reserves right now. I mean, and, and because we have so much in reserves, we've seen the repercussions of that based on our infrastructure not being built out, because we keep putting more and more money in reserves. So, I would like to see us as a board, you know, maybe lobby with some of our legislators and see what we can do as far as maybe release some of these restricted and unrestricted on what we can spend, what we can't spend on the necessary needs of this county. But, other than that, I'm going to keep pushing for lowering taxes. I think it's necessary. There's always, there's always 5% that we can cut, especially in government. We know that there's always 5%. If we could do it in the private sector, we could do it in the public sector as well. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Sadiq.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the, on the topic of public transit, I spoke with Catalina. She's a member of my district. So, Charlie, when we do the transit discussion, can we also have, can we also incorporate the conversation on on-demand service, the ADA bus service, and certainly the beach travel service as well? Thank you. So, I hope that we can get you a bit of a resolution there, and it's something that, you know, we're obviously talking a lot about, the future of the transportation financial model. So, I did pay attention. I want to make sure that when that comes up, send me an email, and I'll make sure you're notified, or, yeah, please do. Thank you. Thanks, Charlie.
Commissioner Feltsch.
To go back to our subject of solar panels, I just want to remind everyone that we can multipurpose in our architecture when we're, we're talking about changing to our form-based code. There is a, rooftops are a kind of a, we have to make the most of what land we have, and it certainly seems to be, to be more appropriate to utilize our rooftops for generating solar power for going into that instead of our agricultural space and calling it a farm. Solar panels are not a farm. Rooftops can give us double our money by putting, again, roof over our heads, and there's some innovative things with parking lots that generate a lot of heat. One way to alleviate that is using the panel awning systems that we have. Imagine parking lots that also generate cooling facilities under them. But, they certainly don't belong where the one thing we do get from those areas is our food. The other thing, first off, I so much appreciate our people who have come here to make a public comment, and I will remind again that we fought very hard to get call-in comments back, and when we don't get any during the first half hour that's allocated to this, I expect that certainly we're going to do something throughout the day today that you would have to call in with later. Use it or lose it. So, I appreciate those of you who have come down. Appreciate the report on our Affordable Housing Advisory Board activities. I'd like to see that from all of our advisory boards. We've allocated a space in the agenda for you. I think we need to schedule one with every meeting, not just have it as an item on the agenda, but we have 27 advisory boards. I expect to hear from one at least every meeting. I think that should be required. So, pick one for the next meeting and get them on here. As far as our handy bus goes, absolutely. And speaking from a district that has very little public transportation available, we really need to work at making sure that those services are equal countywide, and especially equal and fair to our citizens that rely on that amount of transportation. I have nothing past Walmart in District 5 and the Ellington Mall in District 1, and we could certainly use our bus system to alleviate our traffic issues and allow some mobility to our citizens that may not be able to do that on their own. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. No one else on the board. I will quickly say, because I see a number of nonprofit people out there. I see Tracy out there. I see hands up to victory. That's, I'm not sure if you're here to talk about the opioid thing or just financing in general. Okay, opioid. I was going to say tomorrow morning, for anyone who doesn't know, we have a work session in this room at 9 a.m. specific to nonprofit investments from this county. So, there'll be opportunity for public comment there as we discuss those programs. So, that's tomorrow morning, 9 a.m. But, if you're here about the opioid thing, that's coming up in just a little bit, a couple of items. I am now going to the regular items. I'm going to, without objection, move up item number 33, simply because our public safety needs to get out of here. So, Jody, did you want to do your item? Or Matt, whoever it is. You made the request, so, all right.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chair, Mr. County Administrator, Madam County Attorney. I do have, thank you. Matt Myers, Chief of Emergency Management, coming in front of you today about adopting our local mitigation strategy. It's a plan, and we'll just go through a couple of things right here. I also have Ashley Plumstead with me. She is the primary planner on this particular plan. Been with us just less than a year, an EM, but been with the county for a little bit longer. Really dove in, especially being there first four hours and then Hurricane Helene. So, we've been working on this for a while. I just want to go over some of the things about the local mitigation strategy. There we go. So, the actual request of the day is adoption of Resolution 25-162, which adopts the Manatee County LMS. That'll adopt it for the county, and then the municipalities will have a year to adopt it themselves. So, what is the LMS? Local mitigation strategy is a hazard mitigation plan. It talks about some of the jurisdictional comments to reduce these risks. Also goes through a THIRA, which is the threat hazard analysis, so we can see what kind of hazards we think with our subject matter experts that we can help mitigate, and it serves as a basis for the state and technical assistance for funding priorities. So, the regulated authority is the Florida Administrative Code 27P-22, and it requires that each county have a LMS to participate in the hazard mitigation grant program and other grant programs that are offered from Florida Department, Florida Division of Emergency Management and FEMA. So, it's a five-year plan. So, there's our five-year plan update from 2019. So, we have gone through everything, and our next adoption date is due September 1st, and we promised we would have brought this up a lot sooner, but sometimes we have to go back and forth on the requirements from FEMA. So, we did that, and now we are ready to approve. So, the summary is just some updates on some of the THIRA information, which is the hazards and where they land in their analysis, as well as updating all of the actions that have happened since, for, since 2019 for all of the hazards themselves, just updating happened since for, since 2019 for all of the hazards themselves, just updating what previously has happened, occurrences, expectations for reoccurrence. And so with that, we have reviewed with FDEM and FEMA, they have given us the all-clear. All we need is this resolution. We will bring it back up. And then again, all the rest of the municipalities, hopefully by December 1st, will adopt our LMS so that way they can get their funding letters for the next round of funding when that happens. So again, the next steps, we are here in front of you, in front of, in front of everyone to adopt the resolution. FEMA will approve by September 1st, probably before then, and then municipalities will adopt within one year. So does anyone have any questions?
I have no one on the board, so I'll open this up to public comments. I will close public comment. I still have no one on the board, and I will entertain motions to adopt the resolution. I have a motion for adoption by Commissioner Siddique, seconded by Commissioner Ron. No one is on the board. If no one has any comments, you can cast your votes now. And that is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're monitoring everything, so we're not coming to you for an LSE, right? Knock on wood.
All right. We trust you.
Thank you.
All right. Keep those storms out there in the water. All right. Going back to the order of the agenda, Government Relations, item number 30. Who is doing that one?
Good morning, County Commissioners, County Administrator and County Attorney. Michelle Davis, Grant Division Manager, and just wanted to make sure, I am so sorry, that everybody knew that the CDBGDR RFP is out right now. It was advertised on July 25th. We received 127 questions, and the answers were posted on August 15th, and proposals are due September 4th. That is all.
And there's no action required on this?
No, just wanted to update everybody on that and make sure the public also knew because of the time crunch on getting the RFP proposals in.
Understood. All right. Are there any, let me see. No comments? I know there's no motion or action, but I'll still open up a public comment. Any public comments? Seeing none, I will close public comment. And there's nothing more, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Very anti-commentary. All right. Yeah, geez, this one's going to take a lot longer. Okay, item number 31. We are appointing new members to the LMAC Board, the Environmental Lands Management and Acquisition Committee Advisory Board, based upon seats that have come due. So who is going to handle, Debbie, you going to handle that?
Good morning, Commissioners.
And just as a heads up, the county attorney is going to lead this, just so I don't have to fumble over it.
Excellent.
I mean, you can, you can say what you want to say.
Okay.
I'm not stopping you. I'm just letting you know that when it comes time for nominations, it's going to be directed out.
Excellent. Well, I know you probably have all been briefed. Do you want an overview just for people watching, or should I let you lead it off?
No, go ahead, please.
All right. Thank you. Deborah Worth, Environmental Lands Division Manager for the record. And so today's item is for appointments to four seats of this longstanding advisory board. The Environmental Lands Management and Acquisition Committee makes recommendations to the commission on environmental land acquisition, management, and programming. So it's a 17-member committee. We have, as I said, four seats expiring, 16 candidates for you to choose from. Three of those candidates are qualified for more than one seat. And you may note that one of the positions, the Manatee County Chamber of Commerce Natural Resource Committee, they actually make a recommendation to the board, so you'll see only one candidate in that seat. And let me know if you have any questions.
Okay. Well, I guess Pam, we should start with number one.
I can start, just to go over some of the rules for nominations and voting, so the board's clear and everyone's comfortable with how we're going to proceed. We have four vacancies to fill for this board today. We'll proceed forward seat by seat with nominations and voting on each seat separately and sequentially. First, we'll call for nominations. Any commissioner can make a nomination, and no second is required. Once there are no further nominations for a seat, I'll close nominations, absent no objection. Thus, no, no need to entertain a motion to close. After nominations are closed, the board will have an opportunity to engage in debate on the nominees. Once there's no debate, we can proceed to voting. Each commissioner gets one vote per seat. Voting will be in the order that they were nominated, and I suggest we open it up for public comment now in advance of any of the nominations.
Any public comments? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and you can go ahead.
Okay. Commissioners, at this time, I will call for nominations for the first seat, which is the Manatee County Chamber of Commerce Natural Resources Committee Member.
No one? All right, fine. Michael Burton. His only name.
I know, we still have to go through the motions. So we have, is that nomination by Commissioner Cruz?
Sure.
Okay. Nomination by Commissioner Cruz, Mr. Burton. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we will close nominations. Any debate? Hearing none, we'll proceed to voting. All in favor of Mr. Burton, please raise your hand. Mr. Burton is approved unanimously, seven to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Burton. Moving on to seat number two.
Kate Horn.
The, just for the record, the member of the Agricultural Community seat. And I have Commissioner and Mr. Chair nominated Ms. Horn. Any other nominations for this second Agricultural Community Member seat? Hearing none, we'll close nominations. At this time, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Ms. Horn, please raise your hand. Seven to zero. Congratulations, Ms. Horn. Moving on to seat number three, schooled in National Natural Sciences. I'll call for nominations.
Chris Kennedy.
Oh, I'm sorry. I heard Commissioner Siddique first. Who did you nominate, sir?
Chris Kennedy.
Mr. Kennedy. We have a nomination for Mr. Kennedy. I see him as Commissioner Felts' hand raised, ma'am. Mr. Brown. Any other nominations for this schooled in Natural Sciences seat? Hearing none, I will close nominations. Do the commissioners wish to engage in any debate on these candidates?
Yeah.
Of course.
Just to talk about some credentials, number, number one is I've been a member of the LMAC as a citizen. Now I'm the commissioner liaison, and this is one citizens advisory that we, we do have that, we do have a few that have commissioner liaisons. Mr. Brown is a former Manatee County employee. He is retired. He lives in a district that is probably has the most effective status in our environmental lands, and I would definitely encourage our other board members to take into consideration my familiarity with this advisory committee, my experiences, my personal experiences with Mr. Brown. His qualifications far exceed those of, we have some great candidates for this, and I very much appreciate people for applying. But this is something that I believe Mr. Brown is probably our premier candidate for this, and I can't emphasize that anymore based on my background, my familiarity, and my work with the, with this particular advisory committee. So thank you.
Any other debate on this topic?
Certainly, I'll go.
Well, who's on the board?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't see.
Pam can't see the board.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bearden.
I would have to say that knowing that Commissioner Felts is a representative there, I think that, you know, what she said was valid, therefore, you know, I'm going to trust her judgment in regards to, you know, what direction she wants to go. So I'll be supporting you in this, Commissioner Felts.
Mr. Siddique.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I too looked at qualifications, but I also looked to see who'd reach out. When these advisory board positions come up, rarely do I ever hear candidates reach out or see them in the audience, and I tend to favor the ones that tend to reach out. But going into the qualifications for Chris Kennedy, the things that I liked about him were, one, he's schooled in environmental sciences, which is what the position entails for. His work and qualifications include being a member of Manatee Young Professionals, he's Efficient Wildlife, FWC Authorized Go for Tortoise Agent, Registered Environmental Professional by the National Registry of Environmental Professionals. I won't go through the whole list, but I thought it was a fairly impressive background. And I think having a younger voice on that board would certainly be helpful, too. I think it doesn't quite matter what district you're in when it comes to this board, and I'm not necessarily a fan of the way that this board has been expanded in that regard. I think qualifications matter significantly, not necessarily where you are and where you buy land. So I like, I like Chris, I think he's going to be a great candidate, and I think it'd be nice to have some new people on the board. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
There's no one else on the board, Pam?
Okay. We'll close debate at this time, if no other commissioners wish to debate, so we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Mr. Kennedy, please raise your hand. I see two hands raised from Mr. Kennedy, from Commissioner Ron and Commissioner Siddique. All those in favor of Mr. Brown, please raise your hand. I see five hands raised. Other remaining commissioners, congratulations, Mr. Brown. Moving on to the last seat, it is the Banking, Finance, and Real Estate seat. At this time, we will call for nomination.
Nominate Ruth Lawler.
All right. We have a nomination by, by the chair of Ms. Lawler. Any other nominations for this last and final seat?
I'll point out, she also emailed everybody and reached out.
Yeah.
Just.
Okay. Hearing none, I will close nominations. We'll call any debate. Hearing none, we will proceed to voting. All those in favor of Ms. Lawler, please raise your hand. Ms. Lawler is approved unanimously, seven to zero. Congratulations, Ms. Lawler.
And that concludes it, correct?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any kind of closing, like how do they reach out for their orientation?
That really just leaves us with two additional, and we'll schedule that prior to the next LMAC meeting, and thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for all the work you and that board are doing. Commissioner Felts, you're doing an excellent job as a liaison over there. Moving on to item number 32. How many people are here to speak on item number 32 relative to opioid? The only reason I ask is we typically take a break at 10:30. I'd prefer not to stop midstream, so if there's a handful of people, I'd rather just take the break now and come back and bang through. So let's take a break now. It's 10:15. We'll take a break till 10:25, and then we should be able to blow right through the rest of the agenda.
[applause] on item number thirty-two. It's public safety. Well, I will read it to the record because he's not here. Adoption of Resolution R. twenty-five-one-four-five approving fiscal year twenty-five-twenty-six opioid impact grant funding program recommendations. Sir, you are up.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Andrew Kunkel, Opioid Response and Policy Coordinator, Manatee County Public Safety. Just want to say thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present this follow-up presentation regarding the opioid impact grant funding recommendations. Most of this information will look familiar to you, but today's goals are to revisit the recommended program, answer any outstanding questions, and move towards final approval. So just an overview of the opioid settlement timeline from the beginning to where we're at now. I'd like to highlight three key milestones, point your direction to May to August of 2020-24. The board approved our fiscal year twenty-five intent report. Along with that intent report, we submitted an expenditure report to the statewide Council on Opioid Debatement, marking our first step in financial or, I'm sorry, reporting compliance, transparency, and showing that Manatee County overall is good stewards of these funds. Then again, on January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, we presented our annual opioid response update to the board, highlighting our progress and our priorities moving forward. Then on March twenty-fifth, the board approved the opioid funding, opioid impact grant funding and the application process, opening a new competitive cycle. Just a recap of the allocation breakdown, Manatee County is set to get forty million dollars over eighteen years with a two-point-two million dollar annually. As you will see, though, the funds are front-loaded and do taper off as we get closer to fiscal year forty. This is why it's critical that we invest wisely now to build future impact. Looking at fiscal year 2025, we are set to have about twelve, little over twelve million dollars while spending maybe just a little bit under a million on such projects as helping up mission, Project Fentanyl, and staffing and operations at government agencies. Looking at the board-approved fiscal year twenty-six implementation plan, we propose to continue supporting HUM with five hundred and fifty-four thousand, our capital outlay project to seven million to support our shelter initiatives, the opioid impact grant at one million, and again, staffing and operations at government agencies at a hundred and three thousand. This leaves us roughly about three-point-three million dollars in reserve for any future programmatic needs. The fiscal year twenty-six opioid impact grant application opened on March twenty-fifth and closed on May first. Applicants had to align with the approved opioid settlement use, and applications were scored on multiple facets with heavy emphasis placed on the agency's program, plan, and sustainability. The review process consisted of four Manatee County staff members from C V S, the Grants Division, and Health Services, all with expertise in their respective division. Additionally, we had two external subject matter experts from the University of South Florida that reviewed applications. The applicant, I'm sorry, the applications were reviewed individually, and then the reviewers met and discussed the applications themselves and ultimately came to a consensus. The scoring threshold was eighty-eight out of a hundred and ten baseline points to be considered eligible for funding. Just a brief recap of the opioid impact grant as a whole, we received a total of twenty-eight applications with twelve-point-four million dollars in requests. Eighty percent of that came from our nonprofit agencies, and the areas of recovery requested the bulk of the funding. So after a rigorous review process, the reviewers, I'm sorry, after a rigorous review process, seventeen applications were ultimately eligible for funding with a total of six being recommended. For a funding request of just under one-point-two-five million, scores ranged from ninety-seven-point-eight-zero to one-hundred-and-ten-point-one-six with the average being a hundred-and-two-point-one-three. Just to recap on the programs that were recommended, for the prevention area, it was the School District of Manatee County's Strong Futures Program. For the response, it was Operation PAR's Medication-Assisted Patient Services Program. And the foreign recovery were the Harvest House Freedom Recovery Campus for Women, Turning Points Housing Instability for pre- and post-long-term recovery, Manatee County Community Health EMS's Vital Steps Program for longer-term sustainability after long-term recovery, and the Safe Children's Coalition's CAPDA Program, Children and Parents Together Always. Just taking a look at our opioid systemic care, this is not an all-encompassing list. However, it does highlight how our recommended programs do fill in critical service gaps that still remain in our comprehensive system of care. So in summary, we're asking the board today to approve those six recommended programs and also approve Resolution R. twenty-five-one-four-five, which allows the county administrator, deputy county administrator, and the director to execute these set contracts, and also provides a framework for any contract amendments, oversight, or reporting. I thank you for your time, and I thank all the applicants for continuing to do the hard work, and I now welcome any questions.
Commissioner Ballard.
Thank you very much for the really comprehensive presentation of the timeline and how the funds are being utilized. I do have a question about the three-point-three that we have in reserves. Can any portion of that funding be placed in an interest-bearing account, kind of as it sits, to help make the programs more sustainable long-term? Do we know the answer to that, and if not, can we try to find out?
Good morning, Commissioner James Crutchfield, Deputy Director of Public Safety. I did speak with the Financial Management Director. Although that is eligible, it might be worth not as much effort as it is in the return, I think, is the way she phrased it.
Understood. Yeah, that's my only question for now. Thank you.
Mr. Beard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I had the opportunity to look through a lot of the big binder that you gave me, and, you know, I did see some discrepancies, and we discussed as well some discrepancies on a lot of this judging and things of that nature as far as like, you know, how many of these profits are self-funded by donors? And we need to come up with a specific guideline in regards to looking at that and seeing, you know, are they being funded by their donors? Is their budget, is it sixty-five percent funded by donors or what? There needs to be a stipulation there, because here's what I see in the future, especially when we start running these programs. And then the other thing we got to start looking at, too, is are we going to dedicate a specific amount to reserves? Are we going to do a dedicated milage on this? And that's something I'm sure that you're looking at, Commissioner Ballard. But because here's the thing, at any point in time, let's just say five years down the road, any of these nonprofits could hold a hush and say, no, hey, we can't do this program anymore because we need more money to provide more, you know, employees. So we need to have a certain standard that we, and we're going to have to have a workshop put together for this. So, exactly, and that's what we're talking about. But I'm just, you know, bringing that point home because this is really important, you know? And this is probably tomorrow's workshop, I mean, this is going to have to be an ongoing thing, because we're not going to figure out the problems or the solution to the problem by tomorrow. I mean, this is going to be an ever-going conversation that we're going to have, but there's got to be some certain standards put in place. And I just think that with the way that we're judging these nonprofits right now, there's some major discrepancies that we need to address. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right, and I'm on the board, and there we can go. I, one hundred, in fact, I literally had this conversation almost word for word. [laughing] About safety, about everything you just said, I one-hundred percent agree with you, literally everything you said. And that is the conversation for tomorrow. I intended that to be a focal point of the conversation tomorrow. I couldn't agree with you more. However, today, we have a proposal to do something with money that we need to get out to get put to work in the community based upon experts that are way smarter than me and spent way more time figuring out who gets what. So for today, I'm honoring what the staff and the board that put this together is requesting of us. But tomorrow, I hope we have a good conversation that doesn't just have to do with this, but transcends it. It has to do with all kinds of, because we're investing in nonprofits. We need nonprofits to invest in themselves, and I'm not going to go into too much detail because that's a conversation for tomorrow. But we need to make these dollars work better, and we need to have a better system for this than what we have right now. Go ahead.
Is this on? Yes. Courtney DePaul, Deputy County Administrator. So I do want to offer a little bit. So Sarah Brown is on leave, but Tracy will be there presenting with Jimmy on those nonprofits at the work session. The one thing that I would say is we're going to go over the process of how we evaluate this. I've spoken at length with both Jimmy and Sarah about what we do moving forward. We are looking at doing a more comprehensive workshop. Right now, the nonprofit agreements are due to be renewed at the end of September. So there's not a whole lot of time to really change how we rack and stack or how they've been assessed, because, for example, the Children's Services Advisory Board has already looked at and racked and stacked the nonprofits, and we've already let the nonprofits know whether or not they're recommended for funding. So we'll be discussing in a little bit more detail tomorrow how that, those determinations were made. That being said, we are looking at doing a workshop in February, March, April timeframe, so that really the board can not only set nonprofit priorities, but say, you know, we want to look at funding these areas but not these areas, or we want to look at funding nonprofits every two years instead of every year so that we can spread the wealth. Those are things that we want to talk about in the winter, early next year, so that we can set those priorities before we rack and stack the next nonprofit application. So just to be clear, but we're very open. Anything the board wants to discuss tomorrow, we will take notes, and we will bring forward at the next work session as a follow-up.
Sure, I appreciate that. But it takes time for, to turn ships, especially when it comes to nonprofits. So you don't wait till March to sell someone, tell somebody, here's how we're going to score you in six months. Sorry you missed the giving challenge. It's like, that doesn't do anybody any good. And doing it every other year is, I think, is a terrible idea, because it takes time to build up a nonprofit. And if you give them money one year, then you yank it the very next year, you're going to have a lot of good opportunities fail during that little window of time. But again, that's a conversation for tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay, I have no one else on the board, and I know there's some people in the audience who would like to speak. I have nobody listed to speak, so it's just going to be first come, first served. I'm opening this up to public comments.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Austin, and I work for, Austin Colhane, and I work for Hand Up to Victory. Good morning, Commissioners, peers, and fellow citizens of Manatee County. I come to you today not just as a mother of four, a resident of this beautiful county and a working citizen, but as a mother in long-term recovery, as a direct result of Hand Up to Victory. Before this organization found me in the recovery pod at Manatee County Jail, my family and I were trapped in survival mode, battling addiction, living in instability, and headed toward a future of chaos. But Hand Up to Victory didn't just offer help, they offered belief, experience, and hope. They provided suggestions and referrals for transportation when I had none, connected me with recovery support, and stood by me every step of the way. Today, I have a steady job, I'm a present and loving mom, and I get to help others find the same kind of freedom that I found. This Saturday, I'll be celebrating two years clean, and on August first, I also celebrated one year working for Hand Up to Victory, the very organization that changed the direction of my life. I'm just one of many. Hand Up to Victory has helped over twelve-hundred individuals, six-hundred-and-seventy-five of them are parents, starting to rebuild their lives. That's not just numbers, they're real people, real families, and real futures being restored right here in Manatee County. But the need is greater than our current capacity. Every week, people are reaching out to do the hard work to change their lives, but we can't always say yes, because we don't have the funding. We want to say yes more often, especially to those who have spent their lives hearing no. For me, yes meant a placement in sober living when I needed stability. It meant support in finding full-time employment, reconnecting with my children and my family, and being surrounded by recovery resources that truly made a difference. These are just a few parts of my Hand Up to Victory story, but there are so many more waiting to be written. With your support, we can help people in Manatee County do more than just survive. We can help them heal, rebuild, and thrive in 2025 and for generations to come. I am living proof of what your investment can do. My children have their mother back, I have purpose, stability, and faith, and now with your help, we could give that same opportunity to hundreds more. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your belief in redemption and second chances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me today, and thank you to the Commissioners. My name is Ashley Neal. I am the Chief Operations and Outreach Officer for Live Tampa Bay. I'm also a person in long-term recovery and a certified recovery peer specialist. Live Tampa Bay is a regional nonprofit that serves to reduce the suffering and deaths from addiction, and we have been honored to serve this community since we launched a pilot program here in two thousand twenty-one. The issue that we're addressing is clear. While overdose rates are declining, they still remain well above pre-pandemic levels, with deaths still clustering in specific zip codes such as three-four-two-oh-five, three-four-two-two-one, and three-four-two-oh-eight. Our comprehensive approach integrates peer-led outreach, access to recovery support services, workforce development, public health education, and strong coordination with healthcare and public safety systems, all designed to improve outcomes and reduce barriers to care. This application, with this application, we project a twenty-seven percent drop in overdoses, a sixty-eight percent increase in care connections, and a thirty-one-point-five percent reduction in community stigma in high-need areas. We also expect at least fifteen percent higher retention among certified peers. This initiative could save the county up to eighty million dollars in emergency and law enforcement costs. With proven outcomes and a strong track record of securing ongoing funding, the program has a clear path to sustainability. This is more than just a program, it is a life-saving strategy. With your support, we can continue to change outcomes, reduce costs, and build a healthier, more connected community. Thank you.
Good morning, John Agnelli, Manatee County Boys and Girls Clubs. I'm going to save most of myself for tomorrow, knowing the meeting is happening. For us, the challenge that we got into was that, you know, for every year, the state funded us for specifically opioid education and prevention, and the budget was put forward at the state level. And as most of you are aware, they decided that we're not going to fund any more opioid education and prevention, and directed us to come back down education and prevention, and directed us to come back down to the county. We try to keep diverse funding streams. We're making sure that we're, you know, because we're doing workforce development, mentorship, academic success and support. The opioid prevention and education was such a pillar of what we were doing, and assuming that the last four years, it was going to continue the way that it was because that's how they, you know, had broken it down. And we're making stuff happen still. Yesterday, the folks over here had their staff out there giving out Narcan for us and also educating on fentanyl prevention. What a beautiful poster series that is out there. And families were asking questions, right? Steve did an absolute dynamic job. So we are still trying to make sure we're delivering on our deliverables for the community. But again, when it happens and we're told to do it by a state level, that does change some of the funding options that are out there. But the rest I will bring up tomorrow. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Tracy Washington. I'm the co-founder of Ink to Ink Intrusion Services, where Damon Thrash is our founder. Also, we're working with Help Us Help You, Build a Recovery Village here in Bradenton. I really don't have too much to say this morning. The only thing, I just want to reiterate on what I said the last time that I was here. When you have smaller grassroots organizations, I'm just noticing that sometimes they're mostly overlooked. We're giving the same funding to the same large, larger organizations. When we're out here doing the same work, we're boots on the ground. First out here, we don't have the funding. Like someone else said, I'm going to reiterate on that. We just don't have the funding to say yes to everybody. And we think that this program would really, really save lives in our county. Thank you.
Morning, morning Commissioners. My name is Dan Dunmire. I'm with Help Us Help You. I actually emailed all of you yesterday, kind of a synopsis of our plan for our healthcare village on 15th. And I just want to leave you with a couple of things. Commissioner Beard, and you actually stated, you know, we talked about sustainability. And we have a great sustainability plan for this village. It's going to be his first of its kind in Florida. So it sets on three acres. It is, we are going to offer behavioral health, primary care services, and recovery. What makes this a little different, another part of that is if they're stable on MAT, they will have a place to stay. And as far as I know, the county doesn't have anything like that if they're on any kind of methadone or Suboxone SUDs. So we have a great sustainability plan. We just need a little help with renovation. We already invested a substantial amount of money on this complex. So we're just looking for a little extra for renovations. We are going to be opening 50 beds October the 1st. So that will be, one of the obstacles we had was zoning. The zoning has been taken care of. That's been resolved. So we are ready to go. And just looking for some help. Thank you. And I'd probably be here tomorrow as well. So I'll probably talk to you then. Thanks.
Hello. My name is Shrag from Help Us Help You. I just want to, from yesterday's data that came out from the opioid, and we are seeing more on the methadone increase in methadone than GABA painting. So those are the lethal things that's going on. And once we open up our, the village recovery home, we already applying for our FAR accreditation that's going out today. And we are the only one who's going to be taking for the methadone patient to stay in our place. Because most of the recovery homes, nobody wants to take any of the methadone patients. And that's what we are trying to do, is trying to get them out, win them out from the methadone, and stabilize into different medication like Suboxone. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I'm Dan Minor from Harvest House, President and CEO, one of the, one of the organizations that's on the list to be approved for funding. And I just want to tell you how excited we are because our property sits on six and a half acres in 34208, one of those three districts that's been hit so hard. And we have seen somewhere between a four and five times more likely chance of one of our female recovery residents completing the program and getting the services they need if they're able to make it past the first four weeks. And the grant that you are looking to approve today, the funding, will allow us to scholarship those first four weeks for these ladies that are coming in oftentimes from incarceration, hospitalization, chronically unhomeless situations, so they can get a job, they can get income coming in, and get on their feet before they're having to pay a program fee. We are excited because this year, launching October 1st, we're going to be providing on location, in home, right there on the campus, mental health services for free. We piloted that program for the last three years, and we saw recidivism, three-year recidivism drop, believe it or not, in our three-year pilot program with women in that program from 42% to zero. We didn't have a single female that reoffended, a female recovery client that reoffended in three years, that received six sessions or more of on-location, their on-campus mental health services. That obviously is not going to be funded by the county. We've partnered with some donors in the Bishop Parker Foundation here in Manatee County to provide that. And we're super excited about what this funding is going to do in getting an immediate and direct impact into helping with the opioid crisis in Manatee County. So thank you so much for the consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning. Kathleen Kramer, Executive Director of Turning Points. I think some folks were surprised that Turning Points is on the list to be approved because we don't do opioid care on our campus. What we do really well is connect people to resources, as well as for the last, it's almost 15 years, we've facilitated sheltering for individuals who are entering housing programs. We did it for the county for hurricanes. We are very good at facilitating, getting people into the right housing, and the fiduciary agent for that, managing the money, making sure that that happens for agencies across the community. And so we really are staying in our lane and partnering with Helping Up Mission. They, we had conversations with them about where their gaps were, and that was why Turning Points applied, was in partnership with Helping Up Mission, to make sure people had a place to stay before they go to recovery care, just a couple of days, to make sure they're safe, they're connected, they can be reached. And then the, you know, greatest area of concern is when folks immediately come back from the Baltimore program, that they have stable housing, that they have supportive housing. And so our proposal was to do what we do best and help connect those individuals with the correct housing. We're not housing them. Helping Up Mission is saying where they want folks to be placed. They're picking the right placement for them. We're going to facilitate that for them and be that fiduciary agent for them, as well as employ our navigators to really help them connect in with the incredible services that are already offered across our community. So we're excited to try to stay in our lane and do what we do best in partnership with Helping Up Mission. So looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners. Valerie Vale, Executive Director of Manatee County Medical Society. I want to thank you for the time and for this very important project that's happening. You saw that 28 agencies submitted proposals with only $1 million on the table. I can't speak for the other agencies, but the medical society certainly did not understand that only $1 million was being allowed to be submitted, and probably partly why only a few could be funded. All of them are important. They all have their own expertise, but it makes it very difficult when you're receiving $6 million on the front end and only $1 million is being submitted. It's just something to think about. You know, I sit out there and look at people shaking their heads and nodding and back and forth. And I recognize it's a very difficult job that you all have to do and that staff has had to do. Four people on the committee were from the county, and EMS was offered a $50,000 grant. And I'm not saying they don't deserve it. I absolutely believe they do. I just, it wasn't understood completely, the process, who was involved. I would have liked it to be more broad. Who's going to evaluate these programs to see how they're going to be long-term? That's what the medical society proposed in helping to evaluate and determine those things. We have a PhD that we've been working with in public health that's an expert in opioid issues. Not everybody, with all due respect, who is an opioid addict lives in 210508. Many live in 09, 02, 11. People who start opioid addiction, many people start from having a surgery and they get addicted. Doctors are eager to be able to help their patients from within their office for those types of people that really don't know where to go and may not want to go to an organization like Turning Points or HOM or one of those organizations. So I just think some things were overlooked, didn't maybe score as high. And I just, another thing is the capital that in reserves, where is that going? It just seems like if you could start with a bigger bang, let organizations really have an opportunity to offer what they have, then have an outside source evaluate the success of the programs would just be so much more valuable for these funds. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, and no one's on the phone, I will close public comment. There is nobody on the board. I am entertaining motions of any kind at this point.
Motion to approve the recommendations.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ballard to adopt the Resolution R-25-145 approving the fiscal year 2526 opioid impact grant funding program recommendations, and seconded by Commissioner Sadiq. If there's no further comments, you can cast your votes now. Commissioner Sadiq, you can cast your votes now. And that is approved 7-2-0. I'll remind everyone in this room, again, 9:00 AM tomorrow, we are having a nonprofit work session here in this room. So please come and give your thoughts and opinions so we can take those into advisement. Moving on to Commissioner Agenda Items. Item number four, the reimagining of our Central Library. Commissioner Sadiq, this is your item. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So last things first, I've been working on a collaborative effort between involving myself, elected, other elected, sure.
All right. That was the whole room. All right. Go ahead.
Cool. Thank you. So for the past nine months, I've been embarking on a collaborative effort between myself, other elected officials in my district, friends of the Central Library, constituents, some of them are here today, family, friends, that type of thing, to really determine what the future for Central Library is. There's certainly been a lot of rumors. And so one of the things that I've, that I was pretty passionate about before coming into this position was finding ways to, to take a look at a lot of our institutions and services and see whether they are still on mission, or if the mission needs to be reevaluated. I think Central is a good target because I love libraries, learned to read at them, remember my mom taking me to do reading challenges there. So it was just one of those things that people talked to me a lot about wanting to revisit. So what I bring to you today is an item to set aside and allocate $250,000 for a study. I got that number in collaboration with staff who evaluated projects like the Cortez Marina and some others that have involved significant, not insignificant sum, to conduct public workshops, hire designers, architects, that type of thing, and then conduct those exercises on behalf of staff with some involvement by staff. But if you've been to any of the Cortez Marina workshops, you know, there's an army of people there. So that's what the money is primarily intended for. I titled this Reimagine Central because it, that's really what I intend to do here. I think, to really go back in time, I wanted to better understand the history of Central and spent a lot of time working with Carnegie Library to get archive records and learn about the history, going through board meetings as far back as the late 60s. I won't bore everyone with the details, but why it matters is the timeline's important. So late 60s, Central Library first begins to become a concept of an idea after the establishment of a central library system. In 72, the board recognizes the importance and need of a central library, primarily because at that time, we have Central, we have Library Branch, South, a few others still not yet quite built, and then the Carnegie's. But more importantly, we have a need for facilities, for the community to come together to enjoy, a location to store books. And today, it still remains the largest library that serves the rest of the library system. And of course, just a gathering place for a downtown community, but a community in Manatee County that is predominantly still west of, living west of 75. 75, the board agrees to negotiate for three different sites all along waterfront properties, DeSoto, somewhere along DeSoto Waterfront, they call it, which I think is somewhere along where the sand pile used to be, current property on Barkerata and 15th Street West. They picked this property because it would have saved the Carnegie from demolition and a trade with some other property owners. And Central was picked because it was just a, Barkerata was picked because it was just a great location. Finally, in 78, it was built. And time kind of stopped at 78 for Central. If you go inside, I think, aside from the renovations or fixes from Hurricane Helene in Milton, the fixtures, the furniture, carpet used to be from 78. The windows leak, the roof is failing. It's being replaced, granted, but I think the community has told me loud and clear that they want to see a library that can serve the future. When this library opened, it was, there were no computers. There were just desks, lounge access. There were a lot of space for collections. But a lot of other things are different. Homelessness wasn't as bad of an issue in downtown. And if you look at what libraries have become across the country, and that's something I've been, on my travels to conferences, I've looked at other libraries, you see the same thing. Yet there's still traffic by a lot of people, families, young and old alike. So that's not something that Central was really built for, but it's something it's had to endure. And frankly, a lot of our urban libraries have. Services, when the library was built, it had a nice set of spaces for collections. You had the Eaton Room added later on. The Teen and Children Center were nice, but they're aging. The Maker Space was kind of retrofitted in. The pods, podcasting station was kind of retrofitted in. So things have been, and the meeting spaces as well. So a lot of things have been tacked on over time. And there was a minor renovation done in 15, but no one's ever looked back and said, what does a library look like where we have more residential living in downtown, where we have a greater need for community spaces, especially in downtown? And frankly, we need to continue to support our library system that is ever expanding with Lakewood Ranch, with Mixon, potentially more locations in the future. We're not going to spend a lot of money building large libraries. I think this board has made that clear in comments. But there is still a need for a central repository for equipment, for library materials. Conversations have been made about what digital libraries look like. Well, I think it was important for us to go to the community. So I thank staff for putting together a survey that was one countywide, materials from Island Branch to Lakewood Ranch Library. So we collected about 600, just a little bit under 600 responses. The overwhelming majority of them supported keeping the library location where it sits today. But a majority of them also said that it's time to start reimagining what that library looks like for the future. So I think there's some great ideas in there. It's a fairly low effort, low-cost study. But the feedback indicates to me, and my residents are telling me, that we do need to start looking back at some of our older institutions and put a little bit more money into them because that's what the people want. And that's what's going to prepare us for a future where there will be more downtown reinvestment. But more importantly, reinvestment in the urban core of our community and a community that will always need a library. So with that, I will make some modifications to the motion, but it was properly noticed. So based on conversations I had with staff, I didn't feel like doing last-minute updates. And the survey is attached for anyone that is interested in reading through some of the results. So the motion, I'll happy to read it again slowly. The motion is to direct county administration to, one, allocate $250,000 for a study titled Reimagine Central Library, and, two, commission a study by staff and a third party, which will present facilities improvements for Central Library and new and/or revamped services. Can I have a second?
We have that motion by Commissioner Sadiq and seconded by Commissioner Ron for discussion.
Were you done with your presentation?
All right. Then I'm on the board and a few others are as well. Here's, here's my only concern with this motion is I feel like because it's taxpayer money, we're putting the cart before the horse. We haven't really had a discuss, a global discussion on, you, you mentioned a lot of great things about trying to figure out what libraries are supposed to be, but our libraries are an entire system, not an individual building, and I feel like we're taking a quarter of a million dollars, and we just had a bunch of people here asking for $60,000 to help with opioids and important things. We're like, eh, no, but we'll peel off a couple of bills and we'll, we'll run a study for the fun of it on a building we may not even want because we haven't gotten to that stage yet. I mean, we just have a lot of studies on shelves around this building, and those studies are not free. I would much rather find a time to have a meaningful work session with Tammy, with her team, with the library advisory boards, with the friends groups, with the foundations, to understand what we as a board and what Manatee County as a community wants in the future of a library system, because we're talking about Mixons. That's not going to be free, and that's a concept of smaller libraries. We've talked at library advisory boards about the little digital kiosks where people can pick up books. There's lots of opportunities for libraries, looking into the, the new future of libraries. I don't want to spend a quarter of a million dollars discussing how we're going to redo a massive building on the waterfront of downtown until we collectively understand what we want as a library as a whole. So that's my hesitation is I'm 100% on board with discussing what we want for Central Library, I'm 100% on board discussing what we want as a library system. We have a dedicated millage for it, we have a dedicated impact fee for it. We've got money to do cool things with libraries, and the community wants libraries, but that doesn't necessarily mean they 100% want that library in that place, and what that study's going to show needs to be reflective of all of the rest of the discussion, which we haven't even had yet. So I just think it's premature. I like the, the initiative, but I don't like the timing. So I'm going to vote no only from a tax dollar standpoint savings until we can have a bigger discussion, which I do want to have about our library system as a whole. Commissioner Phelps.
I really admire and appreciate this being brought to the board. When it was first put on the agenda, I asked about the associated documents with it, and in the documents, you have a map. If you could explain something on there, it's, it has a library facilities master plan for Manatee County. Tal, can you explain that? It's got...
Sure. So I cited that a lot. It was not formally adopted by the board, but it was commissioned by a prior board. I brought it in there because I don't think it's well understood or known to exist by the public or this board perhaps, but I won't presuppose that, so.
Can you explain what this minutes thing, it's color coded and it says something about minutes on it?
I don't know what you're referring to.
It's page one of twenty-one under Manatee Library System Executive Summary, final PDF.
Sure. So to make a short story of it, I encourage people to read that shortened version of it. Essentially, this was commissioned and executed before Lakewood Ranch Library was built, but it essentially highlights gaps in the county, in the county system of not just libraries but community spaces. So what I, the study as commissioned indicates certain areas that are served, that are underserved, and it highlights just the, the radius around those libraries or potential libraries that could be served. Now, it doesn't mean you have to adopt everything. For example, it says we should put a library at Seventy-Fifth and Manatee, which I would not do.
Okay, I was looking at the, there's a picture that's color coded with maps, and it says Brayden River, eight minutes, Central, seven minutes, Island, seven minutes. What is that trying to tell me here?
Distance to the library, how quickly it is to be able to get to it.
In minutes.
For most residents.
Really? In minutes?
Yeah, look at the date, 2022, though. It started in 2018.
I, again, I, I agree with our chair. This is awesome, and it's also wonderful when we could just be bold enough to say I want $250,000 for a study. I agree, we do a lot of studies, but we do have a citizens advisory group on our library services that I think would be a, a good way of testing the waters with things. In most of our districts besides District One, I would expand this by you could probably get to that library in that district in maybe twenty minutes to a half hour. District One, our library, and we have one, is an hour's drive for other people. So yeah, we have a lot of things to look about at our, at our library system. Meeting places, we're, we're kind of confined on meeting places with our libraries. There's been talk in the last couple of years about actually selling the Central Library. So there is a lot to talk about with our library systems. I think it's a little premature to put a quarter million dollars into it when we have other avenues, which is exactly what a citizens advisory group should be doing as volunteers. We have Mixons coming up that we've got to think about getting our bang for our buck out of there with our library. It's a great proposal. I especially like the reimagine. I like that you went back into the history of how our library system has been set up in Manatee County, but I think making a motion to allocate that amount of money right now is just a little premature, and, but I definitely want to see something like this. Let's get to our library citizens advisory committees and get them to start working on this for free.
Commissioner Bearden. Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I'd have to agree with Chairman Cruz on, you know, kind of making sure we have a all-around discussion before we commit any type of money currently. I just don't want to do things blindly, and I think, you know, committing today would be kind of just doing things blindly without having a discussion. As far as the survey goes, how was that survey conducted? And how did you guys get the information out for that survey?
Good morning, Commissioners Tammy Parrott, Library Services Manager. I believe the survey was circulated through Deb DeLeon's team. We also shared it, but it was not just through library email lists.
Okay, so how was that, do you know how that was executed as far as like how they distributed the survey? Or was it through like a social media platform? I mean, how was that?
Sure. I would have to verify that, but my understanding is that it was through a, a digital platform, not something that the library manages. And I think it was also put out through Nextdoor, but we can verify that and, and report back.
Okay. I'd be curious to see that, you know, to see kind of how those lists are actually distributed. I'm all about accuracy, so I want to make sure that, you know, if we are distributing lists, that it's not going to a specific group, and maybe that's, maybe we do a survey through the mail, mail system to have more accurate, you know, ways to, to gather data. I just don't want to make sure something's not as biased on specific platforms, you know, opposed to others. You understand what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
So I agree with a lot of the statements that have been made thus far. I think Commissioner Cruz makes a really good point, I think, and I agree with Commissioner Bearden as well. Commissioner Phelps, I, I think that the idea of having the library advisory board talk about this, look into this is a great idea, but I do want to bring up something that I've brought up in, in, with previous boards, and that is that the makeup of our current library advisory board is tilted very heavily to the west into the cities, and currently, we don't have the ability to change that or to add seats for our residents who live out east to actually give them a voice as to what our library system looks like. Currently, it is, it is all, it's codified in state law, and it is very heavily tilted toward those city residents and West Bradenton residents.
All right. I have no one else on the board, but we do have a motion, so I will open this up to public comment. Anyone have a public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Donna Mathias, Bradenton. I'm going to change my comments a little bit from what I originally had, but I want to remind this commission that we do have a petition with over 12,000 signatures to keep the Central Library in its current location, and I was very excited to hear about the possibility of reimagining the Central Library so that it would provide more services to a community that uses it heavily, not just lightly. So I just want to remind everyone on this commission of the petition with over 12,000 signatures, and all were keep the library where it is, make it a better place for the community. Thank you.
Any other public comments on reimagining the Central Library? Seeing none, and nobody is on the phone, I will close public comment. There is nobody on the board to speak. I have a motion to approve directing staff to create a project of record for the Central Library and allocating $250,000 towards the effort.
I'd like to respond to comments, Mr. Chair, beforehand.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I heard a lot of comments about having broader conversations about the library system, advisory boards. I encourage you all to bring those items up because this is not that. This to me is something I'm not backing down from, and I've got survey results, you know, Commissioners questioned the accuracy. Staff conducted the surveys. This isn't Tal going out there. Anyone could have reached out to staff for the survey, and if you go to libraries, you would have seen them at the checkout kiosks. I think it just shows there is broad support if you look at the data. Certainly, the concentrations, if you look at some of the later parts of the survey, highlighted around some of the ZIP codes in my district, which is obvious, I've included this in my newsletter, but there are significant numbers of people that are in all of your districts, from Lakewood Ranch to people in Sarasota County that apparently like coming up to our libraries, which is very interesting. The overwhelming majority of people support this, and I promise you, the only reason we don't have people in T-shirts like we do with Mixons is because they recognize that we can be a sensible board that can care for its institutions, things that it's invested in. But let me remind this board that the library advisory board is certainly something I evaluated, but it starts with a directive from this board, and that's the reason why it's not on a library advisory board, coming to you with recommendations and all that good stuff. I do see a future where they can have significant input, and they should, but this sets a directive from the board that this is a project that they need to, that they need to be involved with. Other concerns around selling it? Yeah, no, over my corpse. I know which developers are reaching out to you guys because they reach out to me, and if you think I'm going to let this community sell its Central Library, then I'll just remind you that prior boards with Pat Glass considered selling the same thing, doing the same thing with institutions like the Crosley, and I made that mistake before, I'm not going to make it again. This board has, prior boards have failed to show consideration for our historical resources. I'm not saying the library is historic in nature, but look at the, look at the, the, look at the Maritime Museum, four years of doing nothing, and now we're having to put millions more into it. I don't want us to get to a point with Central where now we need to go through a bureaucracy, have big master plans. I know how government works. I know how the Big Six were put onto our CIP by studies. I also know that's why I put this here as a study, because we need to have a sense of how much it'll cost, what the community wants, and frankly, go out beyond my district and really go to the other districts, but have conversations with staff. I heard a lot of concern over the dollar amount. Again, I don't recall an advisory board, I don't recall a lot of concern over the dollar amount we spend for Mixon, but we're arguing over $250,000 here, when at the time, everyone on this board agreed that we should invest in our library system, and we're even considering what's going to happen with Tangley on the island. So if the concern is over a dollar amount, again, this is a number I got from staff. This isn't me pulling a number out of the hat. So if there's consideration for another number, but I'm not backing down from a request for a study because we need to have that, just like the master plan, which I'm citing now, was conducted and is valuable. So I do think we need to have a study to come back and give us a plan, give us some numbers, and if you don't like $250,000, then I want to figure out a number before we leave today. I don't want this to just die on the vine. Other than that, I'm more than happy to include, again, more people, more involvement, but I think as far as the survey goes today, it was done with respect to taxpayer resources, hence why it's not spending hundreds of thousands to give us that data. So I appreciate your support. If we can get a different dollar amount, then I'm happy to support that, but I don't want to leave here without a clear indication from this board that we will commit to serving our residents and our taxpayers today. Thank you.
Commissioner Bearden, you want to start bidding at zero dollars?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this matter. The reason why I say that, you know, maybe we need to look at different surveys, because surveys have in the past have been skewed in a matter of, hey, send this to all your friends, make sure that they go in, make sure they, they, they vote on this, and because we need to drive certain traffic so that we can get a specific result. So they have been skewed in the past, and with going off Nextdoor and pushing out Nextdoor, that's a social media platform, I don't know if that's as accurate if I'm sending it to friends, to friends, to friends. Being in the marketing background, I know how, you know, surveys work and, and how you can influence certain things in the public in regards to surveys. That being said, as far as developers reaching out to me, I can guarantee you there's no developers that have reached out to me regarding this particular project. And you're talking about a different dollar amount. Well, is it $250,000 or is it just $100,000 now? You know, I mean, are we just making this number up just to kind of move forward with something? I mean, if, if $250,000 is the amount for the, for the, the actual study, why would you want a different amount?
Did you talk to staff in your briefing?
You know what I mean? I'm just saying, I'm just saying, why would you want a different amount if $250,000 is the amount? Now it looks like you're trying to shoot from the hip just to see if you can get a win, which I don't think that on this board, we want to do that. I think we want to look at this, have a discussion with the public, have a discussion with the board on how we're going to proceed regarding our current library system. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. So this is all in your briefings, the numbers are there. You could have asked staff. I asked staff, this is the number I'm set with, but if there's such a...
But you just changed it.
There's a, I didn't change it, the motion's still there. This isn't about penny pinching on our community's resources. The number is 250. That's what I want, that's what will help get this started.
More than half the board has already voted. Go ahead, Commissioner Phelps.
Do we have, is our library citizens advisory board, I know that some of our boards have a commissioner liaison, is our, does our library services board have, and that would be?
Yes, it's me now, it used to be Commissioner Ballard.
Again, it's just $250,000. It's...
We are taking donations at the end of this meeting if we finish.
Maybe we need a GoFundMe account, that's the way we do it.
Look, I'm going to remind this board, I took out...
I understand, I think I have the floor. Do I have the floor? Do I have the floor?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. We're supposed to be fiscal conservatives up here. $250,000 may not sound like much to some people, but I just got a quote last week, this weekend, that $250,000 could buy a splash pad for Myakka City. Well, I'm not up here asking for a splash pad. I'm not asking here that, I, I have no problem. This is a wonderful idea, but why is it always we need money? We have a library citizens advisory board, if we, we have a government communications department. I am not understanding why we are so flippant to just say, give me $250,000. What are we going to spend it on? What is this study going to tell us? What is this study going to tell us? I'll just come back. And again, when this was first put on the agenda, that's all we got was imagine Central Library. I had to go and ask for some supporting documents, and then I get one supporting document that tells me that something is anywhere within eight-minute travel distance in this county. So pull it back a little bit. Nobody's saying no. They're just saying, "Think this out. Use the resources that you have and put more thought into it than just putting a handout for more money, for more studies that may not really get us anywhere, but if we really put our minds to it and we use the resources that we already have, we might come out with something really good here." So it's a great idea. I love it. Everything about it I like, except that it shouldn't take $250,000 to figure out how to reimagine our library system. That's what we have already paid staff for. That's what we already have citizens that volunteer for to do. Learn to work. Learn to work. It's not just about money.
Okay. Commissioners, everyone's spoken more than once. There's no combination of words people could put together that's going to create any new information that's going to sway anybody on this. Unless someone's going to make a motion for a splash pad in Myakka, I'm on board with that one. You know, I implore the two people on this board, you know, if you're going to say something, let's say something new and unique. Because I do have a motion and a second, and we're on the precipice of actually finishing by lunch for the first time in a year.
I'll throw something new and unique there. I'm the only commissioner on this board that when it came to CIP prioritization, I took off and saved all of you and taxpayers $59 million from 59th Street West. I don't even have, I don't even have Trails, the Sun Trail guaranteed in that because when Sheila came back and presented it to us conveniently, it was missing despite two commissioners having requested to pull that in. Not a single other commissioner brought the amount of savings that I did. And I did that because we need to have a reevaluation of the projects that we can invest in. $60 million that, 10 of which are impact fees that are particular to the Southwest District, which we can easily pull funds from. Commissioner wants to talk about, first of all, this isn't imagining the library system. This is Central Library itself. And secondly, this received plenty of notice. If you didn't ask staff, that's your problem. It's not my problem. I think the study was included. The only thing that wasn't was the, was the survey, but usually could have asked staff for it. This board has entertained far less in terms of quality of agenda items, as we've had discussions before. So I'm not backing down. My district isn't backing down. Either you commit to a library or you just show that you want to sell this off to developers and not care about the resources that taxpayers have put a lot of effort into over the years. I'm done with this, Mr. Chair.
I will make a brief comment, and I'm sorry. I, I, I'm not the, I'm not the one. Okay. So here is my thought about the $250,000 for the study. You put in $250,000 for a study, and it leads us down a path. It leads us down a path that is hard to turn away from because then that study says, you know what? We need $8 million to redo the Central Library. And then that sets us in that direction. That shoots us down that path when, just like Commissioner Cruz said, and just like some of these other commissioners have said, we don't know, we have to look holistically at the library system. We can't just say, "We have limited resources and we need to use those resources wisely." I'm not going to set us down a path where we start saying, "All right, we're spending $250,000, and now that study says we need 10 million to redo this library." And then, you know, there's, there's the, there's the library millage. I mean, there's, it's gone. So we have to look holistically. I am all in favor of getting agreement from this board of what we want for the entire library system. Then I would be happy to entertain a study on reimagining the Central Library. And just FYI, I also have not gotten any calls from any developers about the Central Library.
All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Sadek, second to my Commissioner Ron. Nobody's on the board yet, but you can catch your votes now. And the motion fails 2 to 5 with Commissioner Sadek and McCann in favor and myself, Commissioner Feltz, Commissioner Ballard, Commissioner Ron, Commissioner Bearden in opposition. Moving on to, but I will request Commissioner Sadek to work with Tammy, work with Charlie, and try to, let's find some time we can have a meaningful work session, try to get the library advisory board, reach out to the foundation as well, see if TJ and all them want to get involved in it. And let's try to have a big, broad discussion with real information about what other people are doing, what we're paying on a per capita basis, what our square footage is on a per capita, what we can do to, you know, incorporate the Mixon place, the bookmobile, the small little pocket things we talked about sometime in the future. Let's have that conversation before next year's CIP so we can incorporate money into it.
Absolutely. We have a library advisory board meeting tomorrow, and I will begin the conversation then.
I will be having someone representing me there because I will be here talking about nonprofit funding at a work session. All right. Item number 35. Commissioner Ron, this is your item.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The reason I'm bringing this item forward is just to bring this to fruition at the last land use meeting. It just states status quo. And just to make this, just to bring this motion forward, to put it final, put this thing finally to bed. The sign's been around since November 12 of last year, and it just needs to be put to bed. This is being kicked around, and we're going to keep kicking the can down the road. And that's the reason I'm making a motion to direct staff to, one, cease negotiations to mutually terminate the University Parkway Legacy Boulevard roundabout reimbursement agreement, and, two, to continue with existing roundabout reimbursement agreement.
Commissioner Cruz?
I have a motion by Commissioner Ron. I'll second it. And now I will open up. Anyone who wants to speak can put themselves on the board. Commissioner McCann, is there anything else you want to say? It's your motion. Otherwise, I'm going to go to the board for discussion.
I have nothing else to say.
No, I'm already acknowledging him. I just wanted to make sure Mike was done talking.
No, I'm done. Thank you, sir. The motion's been made.
Go ahead, Commissioner McCann.
First thing I want to do is I want to explain my vote by 5.5, 6.1 of our rules. Okay? I knew this was going to come, so I got ethics opinions. And, you know, right now, the Florida bar can still discipline a lawyer, and I'm a hybrid. I have a lawyer, so these are specific to me. The Florida bar can discipline a lawyer who, as a commissioner, votes to allow a known sunshine law violation to happen, even if the lawyer is not the one directly organizing or orchestrating the violation. Rule 4-8.4 misconduct. This rule prohibits a lawyer from engaging in conduct that is dishonest, fraudulent, or deceitful. A lawyer commissioner who votes on an agenda item they know to be based on a sunshine law violation is arguably violating the rule by perpetuating a deceitful act on the public. A lawyer's role as a commissioner does not exempt them from the rules of professional conduct. Again, I'm not talking on the merits of the motion here. I'm staying with 5.5, 6.1. I asked specifically, what if a director says he had an error in judgment because he did not think the public would object to the contract? It says, even if a director claims the exclusion of public comment was an error in judgment or that they did not think the public would object, it does not excuse a violation of Florida sunshine law. Key points: Sunshine Law requirement. Under Florida statutes, section 286.011, all meetings of any board or commission of a state agency or political subdivision must be to the public, must be open to the public. This includes allowing the reasonable opportunity to be heard on matters under consideration, especially those involving official action like contract approvals. No exception for no expected objection. The law does not permit public officials to bypass open meeting requirements, even partially, based on their personal belief that the public won't object. Transparency is required regardless of anticipated public sentiment. Public comment as a procedural right. While the sunshine law does not specify detailed procedures for the public comment, such as duration or format, courts and attorney general opinions consistently affirm that excluding public input entirely on a matter before a board may constitute a sunshine law violation, particularly if the board has a practice allowing comment and suddenly terminates it without notice or justification. I also asked the Ethics Commission on 112 because, again, I don't want to vote on something that could put my bar card in jeopardy, and I wouldn't want to vote on something that could cause me to vote against the statute. So I asked them specifically about 180 and about 112, and they gave guidance on this, and they came out with their guidance that says specifically, you know, your inquiry also makes reference to the general concept of abuse of power. The two provisions that are relevant in that regard are section 112.313, section 6 Florida statutes, misuse of public position, and article 2, section 8, H2 of the Florida Constitution, abuse of the position. In general, we're unable to determine in the context of what you asked whether these provisions will be violated, but they have cautioned me not to vote on those, not to vote in the affirmative against any statute. Okay? So I would like to put this into the record so that you have this because I'm done with that conversation with 5.5, 6.1. Can I be recognized on the motion? The reason I ask is I have a duty to protect the board, Manatee County, and also my citizens. And I have subsidiary motions. And those subsidiary motions are very important to this, and they take precedence over that motion.
Okay. We don't know what the motions are.
Okay. For procedural, I'll ask you because it's in your discretion. I have actually three motions here, subsidiary. Do you want to handle them one at a time, or do you want them all and take them in order or precedence?
I don't know. Pam, have you seen these? Do you know what we're talking about? We've thrown out like 400 different statutes and numbers. I can't follow what's being said at this point in time. So you have the floor. You have a right to read things on your paper. I'm not going to claim to be an expert in subsidiary motions relative to super priorities relative to a motion that's already on the floor and seconded, so.
Mr. Chair, by no means am I a parliamentary expert, but I'm, Commissioner McCann has not discussed with me any of the content of what he's bringing up today, so I have zero familiarity with what motions he either intends to make or these ethics opinions or anything he's commented upon. So I feel a little bit unprepared to render any legal opinions over things that I haven't been privy to.
Okay. Well, I've got, I've got two, you're on the board, but I have two people in front of you.
Okay. Under Robert's Rules of Order, a meeting can be postponed to a definite time while waiting for an expert opinion by using the subsidiary motion to postpone for a definite time. The key principles are to remember the postponement. Subsidiary motions, these motions, which are used to dispose of a main motion, typically require a majority vote to pass. This includes motions like postpone to a certain time or commit and refer. However, some subsidiary motions, like the previous question, and limit or extend limits of debate, require a two-thirds vote. These motions are not incidental motions. These motions are priority motions according to Robert's Rules of Order, which say that, you know, they supersede that motion, and they stop the action on that motion until you can determine on these.
Okay. I'm not randomly postponing them. We literally already had that motion, and it felt like three hours ago. No, he's not saying we're breaking sunshine law.
Okay. What I'm going to say, what I'm going to say again, you know, you don't need to rely on my opinion or anything like that. My opinion is my opinion. You have your own opinion. You have your own right to vote, and I'm not challenging that in any way.
Sure.
But my first motion will be to postpone for a definite time to get an unofficial opinion from Pat Gleason, special counsel for open government for Florida Attorney General's Office.
I'll second.
Well, I'm not done with the motion, but I have been in contact with her. I have emails from her, and I will put those into the record.
Okay. Put those in as exhibit B.
Okay. I move to postpone the consideration of the main motion on the board regarding agenda item 35 to a definite time, specifically to obtain an informal opinion on a possible sunshine law violation committed by a Manatee County director in the formation of the contract contained in the primary motion, which would render the contract void. The purpose of this motion is to allow this body to obtain informal legal opinion from Pat Gleason, special counsel for open government for the Florida Attorney General's Office, to provide guidance to the Board of County Commissioners to make an informed decision prior to taking any action. The need for legal counsel to ensure this body acts in full compliance with state law and maintains public trust, it is critical that we receive a legal opinion on this matter. Proceeding without disclarity could expose this body to legal challenges and undermine the integrity of our decision. That's subsidiary motion number one.
Well, we already have a motion on the board.
Who, nobody knows what's going, we're just making it up now, so. This is a different motion on top of this motion because it's a motion that takes priority over this motion. We don't need to put it up. We know, there's no way you could write that. I mean, that's a page. You could take that. County attorney, do I need to open up public comment every, for, how many of them? You have three?
I have three of them.
I'm not opening up public comment for all three of these things. What are we doing here?
Well, sir, if it's a procedural motion, I don't believe you have to have...
That's my point.
Right. There's no requirement to have public comment on procedural motions.
Not to mention, this one is almost substantially similar to the one we had at 9:15 this morning, which was to postpone to a time certain. This is just adding clarification to the identical motion that was already made previously.
Well, it appears to be a compound motion because it has more steps to it than the prior motion that was given. The prior motion, yeah.
It expands upon a previous motion. I didn't know. We can just add a step and then have motions again.
But to the extent that it does add additional steps, that's beyond a mere procedural motion because it's requesting additional action. It's one thing to say it's a procedural motion to postpone, but when you add steps about wanting to obtain opinions and legal opinions, that's a whole different, that's not really a procedural motion, at least as far as my understanding of Robert's Rules is. But again, I'm not an expert here.
Okay. I will open this up to public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment. You have a, this is, you're literally making, you're only allowed to speak on that exact motion, so I sure hope you know what that motion was because nobody else up here does.
Oh, come on.
I'm just saying that, but that's the case. That is what this is. This is a, this is opening public comment specific to that motion.
Well, then, give them the Barney method so they can opine their opinions. They live there.
It's not open to the discussion on the roundabout or the primary motion.
This has nothing to do with my motion.
I know.
Go ahead.
Good day, sirs, madams. My name is Hillary Harder. For the record, this has nothing to do with the roundabout. This has to be, as my understanding, a motion to protect the commissioners from harm. Period, paragraph. I would certainly be very careful and diligent in understanding that people want to keep people out of harm, whether it is the residents or our honorable commissioners or our staff. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Is any of the people on this board here to speak specific to this motion? Otherwise, I will just do this by a voice vote because it's not up on the screen.
Does anyone want to read this motion before we do it?
No, I'm voting no on it, so it doesn't matter.
Okay.
I would like to understand something. And what I would like to understand is where you believe that the sunshine violation occurred and whether, if this is considered, so what is this meeting with Chad Butso that was supposedly a sunshine violation? And what does this mean for the future if our staff is required to have a public meeting And what does this mean for the future if our staff is required to have a public meeting every time that they discuss a potential contract? Is that, is that, like, I'm trying to understand how this differs from other things that staff is doing quite regularly.
Chad Butso made a comment at the last meeting that he did not see a need to have public meetings before this roundabout was contemplated, because he did not believe there would be any objection. Okay? Now, again, the first time that I talked about a possible sunshine law violation was the fact that, you know, this was on a consent agenda. This was not noticed, nobody had any input. Chad Butso had a conversation with the Steve Zelinski from the CDD, and he told him this was going to be talked about in December. Okay? He told them that, well, this was being approved.
So I, what I don't understand is how something being on a consent agenda that's noticed could be a sunshine violation.
Okay, it's not just that it was on a sunshine, you know, on a consent agenda. The relevant case law is Law &amp; Info Services, Inc. versus City of Riviera Beach, 670 SO2D 1014, Florida Fourth, DCA 1996. In this case, the court expressed concern that citizens interested in the matter will be misled into not attending a meeting if the matter is not noticed on an agenda. And the matter was noticed on an agenda. It did not refer to the roundabout, it did not refer even to District 5 until such time that it moved there. The motion itself just said this was a transportation. It was vague, it was ambiguous. So, you know, based on that alone, you know, we were looking at the fact that they weren't notified, they didn't receive proper notice, and yet they were misled. I will also tell you that, you know, developers do not have exclusive rights to the courts. This one's going to court whether you like it or not. Okay? I can tell you that citizens can do the same thing. The difference is that, you know, they're going to go in here alleging a sunshine violation which would void the contract anyway. If the developers want to take it to court, they can defend it by saying, and so can we, by saying there's a sunshine violation. Okay? And that voids the contract.
If you don't mind if I ask another question.
Sure.
So this was also on a work session, and was also discussed publicly in other, in other forums, is, I'm just really, I'm not comprehending where the sunshine violation is. If I believed that there was a sunshine violation as a lawyer, I would not be able to vote for this. However, I, I'm differing in my interpretation. I don't believe that the fact that it's, that it was on a consent agenda constitutes sunshine violation.
No, I do not believe that either. I believe that the reasonable notice wasn't there. I think that the public identified that the reasonable notice wasn't there. Can I have that back that I handed to you a minute ago, so that I can read that into the record? Because that'll answer these questions. I do not want, you know, this commission to be harmed.
It wasn't roundabout.
Is it sunshine violation, sunshine law or amendment violation if a director with contract authority excludes the public from being heard in Florida? Sunshine law amendment violation, yes, it is a violation of Florida sunshine law if a director with contract authority excludes the public from being heard at a public meeting. Florida sunshine law, found in Chapter 286, mandates that meetings of public boards or commissions must be open to the public at all times. Okay? The law explicitly comments the use of secret ballots and all that other stuff. But what we have here in the key points, even if a director claims the exclusion of public comment was an error on judgment, or that they did not think the public would object, it does not excuse a violation of Florida law. Key points, sunshine law requirement under Florida statutes 286, all meetings of any ward or commission have to be open to the public. This includes allowing the public reasonable opportunity to be heard on matters under consideration. No exception for no expected objection. The law does not permit public officials to bypass open meetings requirements, even partially based on their personal belief that the public won't object. Mr. Butso stood there on August 7th and said, "An admission against interest," you know, "I didn't think the public would object, so I didn't include the public." That's, that's public record. That's, you can watch it in the motion, and you can read it in the minutes. Okay? He also said he had an error in judgment.
Wait, hold on, just, I just want to interject for one second. The closest thing to sunshine up here is somebody spouting off on their votes on this dais under their breath with their microphone off, so please, let's avoid sunshine on this dais while we're discussing sunshine. Thank you very much.
I said that's sunshine. Okay. Error in judgment is not a legal defense. Mistake, negligence, or poor judgment does not excuse compliance with the sunshine law. The standard is whether the meeting was conducted openly and with public access. If the public were effectively barred from speaking on a contract matter without proper procedural justification, adopted rules, notice, and equitable alternatives, the action may be voidable and the conduct could be legally challenged. Consequences, a violation could result in the invalidation of the contract action if it were approved during a meeting where the public comment was improperly suppressed. They didn't even know about that meeting, because they were excluded. The Attorney General or affected citizens may file enforcement actions. Public officials may face disciplinary or legal consequences if willful. The statutes are in here, there's, it'll also tell you about Attorney General opinion, it'll tell you about the City of Coral Springs versus Westside Video, Inc., emphasizes strict compliance with the sunshine law. What I'm asking for in my motion here is not for you to take my word, I'm asking for an opinion from the expert on the sunshine law. Okay? And, you know, she's already on notice, I've already sent her, you know, emails, she knows everything that's going on here. Now, she won't opine specifically on this, but she will opine on a specific incident, but she will opine on the sunshine law itself and its application. So that's what I'm asking for. And I think it's very important that we get something that says, you know, we're least protected, so, you know, this is just a little time delay, and you can bring it back if she says, hey, there's nothing there that you have to worry about. Otherwise, otherwise, you know, there's going to be a lawsuit one way or another, and I can tell you that they're going to determine whether this contract is voidable or not. Manatee County will be named in a lawsuit from either side, so, you know, if you think you're saving time on this, I think it would be better if we had an actual opinion that told us, you know, we are not violating the sunshine law.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner McCann, I have a second by, who seconded this thing?
I second it.
Oh, Commissioner Bearden seconded. I hope you have one, otherwise we just spent a lot of time talking for nothing. Second by Commissioner Bearden. We will take a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nye. Commissioner Feltz, how did you vote down there? Okay. That fails 3-2-4 with Commissioners Ron, Sadiq, Ballard, and myself in opposition. Did you have a second motion?
Mr. Chairman, on that motion, can I have a show of hands, please?
All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand.
Okay, thank you.
All opposed to that motion, please raise your hand. Motion fails 3-2-4.
That was on a subsidiary motion.
Correct.
That's correct.
Yes, correct.
Next subsidiary motion. Motion to postpone for a definite time to get legal advice regarding a possible violation of the Florida sunshine law that would nullify the contract. I move to postpone the consideration of main motion on the board regarding Agenda Item 35 to a definite time specifically to receive a legal opinion regarding Manatee County's potential violation of the sunshine law, which would void the contract contained in the primary motion. The purpose of this motion is to allow the body to obtain a formal legal opinion from the county council, a retained law firm, or the State of Florida regarding a potential violation of the Florida sunshine law, Chapter 286 Florida statutes. The need for legal counsel is to ensure this body acts in full compliance with state law and maintains public trust. It is critical that we receive a formal legal opinion on this matter. Proceeding without this clarity could expose this body to legal challenges and undermine the integrity of our decision. So this one is asking specifically for a formal legal opinion from our county council, who said she didn't get a chance to review the contract, and then after she reviewed the contract, she reviewed the four corners of the contract, but did not look at the formation and the sunshine law. So I think we should give her sufficient time to do that, postpone the motion until she comes back with that, you know, and I will ask, how long would that take?
Sir, based on my understanding of what I believe you're alleging is a sunshine law violation, I'm prepared to give the board my opinion on that today.
Okay, go ahead.
I do not see that there was any sunshine law violation alleged. Your directors are not subject to the sunshine law. The sunshine law applies to board members, specifically to members of this body. Commissioners in the county can commit a sunshine law violation if, in fact, those doors were locked, if people weren't allowed to come in, if we shut down speakers, if we didn't properly notice the meeting, if we didn't take proper minutes of the meetings after the meeting. Based on my understanding of everything that occurred on this contract, none of that took place. We always took minutes, they were always properly recorded, all meetings were noticed, all deliberations occurred on the board. Obviously, I don't know whether any commissioners were actually having secret discussions, not on the dais, about what was going on, but absent any fact of that, I, it appears to me that the sunshine law was properly followed here. That would be my opinion.
So it's your opinion that county officials, including yourself, wouldn't be violate, wouldn't be subject to the sunshine?
As an individual county attorney, no, I'm not subject to the sunshine law. The members that are subject to the sunshine law are this body. Your county staff is not subject to the sunshine law. The county administrator is not subject to the sunshine law. It's this body. That's the law in Florida, sir.
Okay, we have a difference of opinion on that, for sure, and that's why I would like to go back to Gleason, but the thing is that, after you vote today anyway, I am going to get an official opinion from the Attorney General, which will be very persuasive and which will help whoever files this court case.
You're actively proposing to sue yourself and this government from this dais.
I know.
Spectacular. No, no, please, let's hear your third motion. This is going to be good. What are you going to do?
Okay. This is a good one. This is very easy.
I can imagine.
Okay?
Wait, we still have, what, do you still want the second motion? You were given the opinion that you're asking for. Do we still need to, you have, there is a motion on the floor.
Then I'll second that motion.
There's a motion on the floor to ask Pam to write down what she just said verbally.
Pam, or?
Nope.
An outside counsel?
You said the county attorney.
I said outside counsel, also, I can reread the motion if you'd like.
All right, let's just take a motion, let's just take a vote on this. I have a motion by Commissioner McCann, second by Commissioner Bearden. All in favor, please say aye. Well, please raise your hand. Don't have to do it twice. All opposed, please raise your hand. Fails 4-2-3 with myself, Commissioner Ron, Commissioner Sadiq, and Commissioner Ballard in opposition. What is the third motion?
The third motion is postpone indefinitely to cure any potential sunshine violation regarding possible violation of the Florida sunshine law that would nullify the contract. I move to postpone the consideration of the main motion on the board regarding Agenda Number 35 indefinitely, specifically to cure the potential violation. This is typically done by holding a new, properly noticed, and open public meeting where the matter is discussed and the contract is voted on again. The second meeting must be a full, open, and public reconsideration of the issue, not just a perfunctory reratification of the previous secret decision. If this is done correctly, the contract may then become valid. That's what I move.
I'll second.
And I have a letter in here, so that you understand, from Steve Zelinski, saying, "My concern in debt of many of the residents within the country club was when that determination had changed and what, if any, notice was provided to the general public. Based on the latest design plans of the proposed roundabout, there also appears to be the possibility of either an easement assignment or annexation of CDD 2 property. If that is the case, why hasn't the Lakewood Ranch Community Development District 2 been apprised of such scenarios? Traffic flows in and out of the country club," and he goes into other things, saying that, you know, "they got no notice. I would appreciate if the county could consider postponing the proposed plan until there has been public input, and respectfully request that a county representative from either the board or staff present the proposed roundabout plan to our boards, so that our county may better understand our concerns regarding traffic flow and safety. A presentation may also relieve concerns of the board members and the residents within the community. I understand that these decisions are not made in a vacuum, and that the entire BOCC weighs in on these matters. However, you are recognized as our District 5 liaison and representative to the BOCC, and you have an impact on your colleagues regarding matters that affect your constituents. Your attention to this matter is greatly appreciated, and I look forward to your response." The thing is that he is saying here, he did not receive any notice, and, you know, he didn't, this is the gentleman that runs the inter-district authority, and he also said that, you know, he was unaware of this. This is the person that Chad Butso talked to and said this would happen in December, as it was happening on a consent agenda.
I have a motion by Commissioner McCann, second by Commissioner Bearden. We'll just vote on it. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, please raise your hand. The motion fails 3-2-4 with myself, Commissioner Sadiq, Commissioner Ron, and Commissioner Ballard in opposition. Commissioner McCann, is there a fourth motion?
No, there is no fourth motion, but...
We're back to the main motion on the floor and the motion.
Do they have a discussion?
Yes, we are, and I've got a list. Commissioner Ron, you are first.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to defer to the county attorney to speak before I do, but I'd like to yield my time right after that. County attorney needs to speak.
You want to retain your time right after?
Retain my time, sorry, retain my time, sorry.
No?
Sure. Are you the county attorney?
I just wanted to clarify a remark I made, because the words I used earlier were a bit unartful. The sunshine law is really comprised of two components, the Open Meetings Act and the public records law. We are subject to the public records portion of the sunshine law, the county administrator is, I am, and your staff, but the Open Meetings Act portion of the sunshine law. So when I used the term earlier and said we are not subject to the sunshine law, I meant the open meetings portion of the sunshine law, so I just wanted to clarify that. I don't want there to be any confusion that you think we are immune from the sunshine law entirely. We are responsible for complying with the, with the public records portion. Thank you.
Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. On November 12, 2024, this was brought before this board, and it was a duly publicized meeting at that time, and it was on consent. Four members of this board that are here today voted on that, the Manatee County Lakewood Ranch Corporate Park LLC, to enter into a reimbursement agreement, which was done again on November 12th. So to say the public was not duly notified, it was posted as an agenda item under consent, and it moved forward on that date. So I'm assuming that when Mr. Butso was talking to whoever you mentioned, whatever, he was saying that it had been voted on and it was moving forward in December. I can't speak for him, but that's all, knowing Mr. Butso, that's probably what his comments were. But this was an authorized reimbursement agreement, authorized and voted on by this board, so we're moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think the main concern is that this wasn't publicly noticed as a roundabout on consent, which is deceptive. In regards to what Commissioner McCann was stating, you know, he has a valid point in regards to that. And based off the conversation we had with Chad Butso in regards to him specifically saying that he did not think that he needed to have, to notify the public, then... to have, to notify the public, then we'll fall, would fall under that, that we didn't do this properly in a way that noticed to the public, in a way that leaves us up for a liability, you know, to essentially be sued, and this whole contract is null and void. So, I would recommend that this board push this out so that we can have the formal opinion, because if we don't, we're just saying, we're just willing to break the law. That's, that's, that's what we're doing right now. So, I don't know. I would recommend that we push this out until our county attorney's office can really look at this. I mean, she's, she hasn't been able to give us a direct opinion in regards to what we should do, and she typically needs time, and I think this is the best-case scenario where she would need time on this until we get the answer from the Ethics Committee. So, that's just my opinion, but you guys flow with the way you guys want to flow.
Okay, I'm next up, then. Commissioner Phelps is up. I have the agenda right here in my hand. It says approval of the consent agenda. A motion was made by Commissioner Van Osterbridge and seconded by Commissioner Ballard to approve the consent agenda with the changes incorporated in the Agenda Update Memorandum. This motion carried six to nothing. The agenda itself is Item Number 44. It says on it, "Execution of reimbursement agreement with Lakewood Ranch Corporate Park LLC for transportation improvements." That's all it says. It doesn't say a location there, it doesn't say where it is, it doesn't say the roundabout. I'm not dialoguing with you at this time, thank you. That's all it says, okay? Ironically, we keep, we were talking about budget before at meetings, and the people that voted on this took away the budget for it, okay? They took away the budget amendment, the adoption of the budget amendment. So, this is a non-funded thing. It's right here on that agenda. They took away that budget, so it's not funded. But the next thing is that if you are a member of the public and you think you can sit down and go through every agenda item and pop on everything on here and think you didn't put notice on there to mislead without even putting where it's located, you know, I don't think that people in the CDDs, the country club, the river club, certainly I wouldn't know this, you know, you put down, again, nothing but land, you know, you put down execution of a reimbursement agreement with Lakewood Ranch Corporate Park LLC, okay? For what? For transportation improvements. Where? You know, are you expecting the public to go through every one of those? There's a case on point on that, and I just said that a minute ago. It was, you know, Legal Info versus City of Riviera Beach. It's on point, okay? And City of Riviera Beach got hit with a violation, okay? I think personally, all I'm asking for, all the public is asking for here, is enough time to say, are we in violation of the Sunshine Law? If we're not, then hey, proceed. But if you're confident voting now, again, you know, remember, you can be voting against a state statute if it's found to be a violation. Okay, I'm done.
Can I dialogue with him?
I have Commissioner Phelps on, you can put yourself on the board and ask the question.
Can I dialogue?
There's only...
Yes. So, my question would be, based on that particular agenda item, the way that it's stated, can the county attorney give us an opinion as whether or not that is valid enough in order for us to, to say whether or not we're breaking Sunshine or whether or not, you know, this is good to go to vote on? Based on that specific agenda item that he said, if you want me to pass that down, I can let her look at it.
I can't believe it's that year and time.
Would you, would you say that'd be deceptive? Is my question, and I'd like to have your opinion on that. If you can give me the opinion now, maybe we can look at, here you go, come on.
I could try to pull it up online if you can tell me what meeting it's referenced to, sir.
I'm just giving it to you right now, it's a meeting in November 12.
November, November 12, 2024?
There you go. Here you go. Which one is it?
Item Number 44.
Let me just look at the...
Do we need more time?
Well, if I could have just, you can continue your discussion. If you give me the moment to look at it while you continue your dialogue, I can do that.
I'm done, I'm done. That's just my only questions.
I hesitate to vote to cease negotiations for many reasons. Having been a person there and knowing a lot about what we consider communications with the public, we have a lot of questions about things that end up on the consent agenda. Many years, I would, if I didn't have a lot of questions about things that get on consent agendas and public notice. This is the same situation that I've been fighting for with little yellow signs with Egyptian hieroglyphics on them, hidden in the weeds, that nobody understands or gets the opportunity to have that public voice. We have, with this small, I'm not saying it's small, but we've, we've kind of exposed a lot of things that maybe we're not doing quite right in this county and underestimating when people do want to be involved or who should be involved. I'm, there's another facet of this. Rex Jensen himself wasn't even notified when we put this on the agenda to discuss. That's just as much a disservice to him as it is with our citizens not knowing that by a description on a consent agenda that you were talking about a roundabout. So, why would, and, and, and here's the thing, in all of this, we're, we're, again, we're not talking about whether or not it's public safety, any detriment, whether it's a traffic studies, whether it is gonna be, we're all about talking contracts and Sunshine Laws and communication. The bottom line is that it's, public safety is an issue. Doing things with the right procedures and, and, and being transparent and accountable about those things, this is just a situation that has exposed some of those things. And I think if we take that as a, a, a learning experience with this, that's what we, we were up here to do. We're not gonna be perfect, staff's not gonna be perfect. The public doesn't know what the public doesn't know. We do a really cruddy job of having educated, informed, and involved citizens. And on the other hand, we had 30 minutes of silence when people could have called in and had their opinion. So, why make any man the boogeyman in this? Why would we want to cease negotiations when the negotiations are what you come to do when you reach an impasse? So that you have a mutually beneficial decision, regardless of whether it ends up with a roundabout or a traffic signal. Rex Jensen's going to have a contract to do something, and he was the one that wanted the traffic signal to begin with. So, we've really got into a little bit of a match of things, but being so far off the subject, which is the most important, what is best for that community? And the bottom line is, those people in the community and that county commissioner over there are supposed to be the ones that get some input. So, everybody's been a little exposed through this, a little bit, we need to do better. Maybe there were certain things that were done in a surreptitious manner or whatever, but why would we want to cease negotiating? When we could come up with probably a really good solution for everybody? Why stop? Why stop and, and, and just say, too bad, one party or the other, when I think that if we, again, go back to the facts, go back to the traffic studies, go back to what people wanted to begin with, and do this the right way? We've already pointed out, we just went about things the wrong way. So, why would we cease negotiations instead of just, okay, get back to the drawing board and do it right this time? And, and get over, maybe do it better this time? I wouldn't want to cease negotiations. I wouldn't want this to create lawsuits and, and, and we just did something a little bit wrong. Let's take the opportunity to do it right. We're gonna end up with a roundabout or a traffic signal there. Let's just take it from the top and do it right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Phelps, I appreciate your words in regards to this. I will tell you that I don't know what the big deal is in regards to whether this is a light or a roundabout. If the citizens want a light there and they want to expand the lanes or whatever that might be, let's give it to them, right? If this is a money issue, let's, let's, let's figure that piece out so that the proper, you know, S M R can, can get what they need to get paid, all right? We are trying to hear the residents coming through Commissioner McCann, but yet we want to ignore the fact of what he's trying to do and what he's trying to say. I don't know what the big deal is. Why are you guys willing, is this a pride issue? I think this, this has, that, this, this right here has to deal with pride. This has to do with pride. You guys gonna die on this hill? Come on, give me a break. Is that what you guys want to do? You want to die on this hill and spit in the faces of District 5 residents because they don't want what they don't want there? Hey, look, if this is a money situation, let's figure out that piece, and let's, why can't all parties be happy? Why does it have to be one way? Because it's been that way for too long. And so, now the residents want to speak up, they figure, they, they're empowered to come out and speak, but yet we don't want to give them what they want. Is that, is that the type of board that we want to be? Right? Is that the type of board we want to be? We want to die on this hill and have so much pride that we're not willing to negotiate? That this, it's this way or no way? Is that what we want? Is that the type of board that we want to be? Or do we want to work with the public? Do we want to work with the stakeholders to come up with a solution that works for I guess my words aren't important to you, Chairman Cruz. I guess they're not important, right? And I guess the constituents' words aren't important as well, because it's coming through McKish, the constituents are coming through to Commissioner McCann, but yet we are, we're ignoring it. We're turning a blind eye to it. Say, ah, we don't care what you say, because that's what you're saying today, is that you don't care what they say. Well, we're willing to possibly move forward with this, even possibly breaking Sunshine Law without even looking into it. And y'all can sigh and, ah, maybe because you ain't get, maybe, maybe because, you know, you want to get your way so bad that it kills you, deep down inside, because you can't bury your pride. At the end of the day, we just, we're up here, people showing their true colors. Now, who are we gonna represent? And it's just a, it's just, it's, it just, it's another confirmation. I call it the confirmation of the confirmation. Who these people actually work for? Man, you know, that's why I love our Constitution and our government, because guess what? The people, when they, when they answer, our government is formalized to where if something doesn't go the way, the people could speak up, and guess what? New people come on in these seats. That's why I love this country, because when the people speak, they speak. When they know what's going on, they have the right to come up here and state their And with this whole ordeal, in my opinion, I don't think it was done right, and I voted on it too, by the way. I voted on the consent. I did that. I wish I would have known more detail on this, and, and guess what? A lot of my decisions are based on the emails that I get, so I keep sending those emails. There was no emails on this. Why? Because maybe it was deceptive, based on what was on the consent. And now, if I would have had emails on this, it maybe would have changed the way that I voted on this and consent in November. But I didn't get any, I didn't get one email, not one. Not one citizen comment on this particular item, not one, except after the fact. And based off the deceptiveness of how this item was labeled on the consent is not due in our public. And you can sigh and roll your eyes, but, you know, it is what it is. Were we deceptive? Why wasn't it? Why wasn't it on the consent agenda as roundabout on University Parkway and Legacy Boulevard? That was easy? Why, why did we, why did we turn, change the terminology? There had to be a reason why we changed the terminology on this. Who was the chair at that time? Commissioner Ron, you were the chair. I'm not accusing you, I'm just asking you a, a simple question. I didn't ask you to answer.
You've got the southern twang going.
I'm not asking you to answer, I'm not asking you to answer that, but if we put a roundabout in, it's, it's a roundabout on Lorraine and Players. It's a roundabout on this specific intersection. I've seen it that way time and time again, but all of a sudden, we get some pushback from the public on the last roundabout that we wanted to put a light in, and all of a sudden wording and terminology begins to change. And all of a sudden, we don't have, we don't notify the public, and, and we have a, a director up here that tells us, I didn't think, you know, that, you know, I wasn't gonna get, well, of course you're not gonna get, you didn't hear anything because you didn't notify it in a proper way. And he didn't notify the public in a proper way of what exactly it was. Everything else we're detailed, but the things we want to push through are not as detailed, it seems, like. And this happens to be one of them, where I don't really understand why we did not put University Parkway and Legacy Boulevard roundabout. We're putting it on this motion to vote on, why didn't we put it on the consent that way to vote on? It's comical is what it is. That we think, as a board, that we can fool the public. It's comical. You have an educated electoral, let me tell you, and they're get, they're getting more and more educated every single day, help, electric, whatever, but you, you help with that, Chairman Cruz, you help with that.
Because I listened to the emails that came in about the Wetlands and 2128 and the impasse fees and Tunnel to Towers.
You didn't listen to 2128, because you voted on Taylor Ranch, you voted on Taylor Ranch, you didn't listen on 2128. You voted on Taylor Ranch, which is over 2,000 homes, you weren't.
Sure did.
Because if it wasn't for that vote, guess what? 2128 doesn't push forward.
That's literally not how that timeline works.
East River Ranch, yeah, yeah, it was, yeah, it was, Commissioner Cruz. Sometimes you contradict a lot of your statements in your votes.
Commissioner Bearden, are, can you, can you finish your campaign speech so we can move on to the other people?
I'm not finishing no campaign speech. This is not a campaign speech. This is, this is to check our board. That's what this is about.
Okay. Commissioner McCann, you're up next. Commissioner McCann, you're up next.
I'll be brief. Mr. Jensen could help us with this if he wanted to. We could just pay him, you know, what he did on the design and, you know, go back to the original thing. He could do that if he wanted to. The problem I have here, and, you know, there are legal implications for this, you know, the official's admission, you know, as well as the thing there, both raise questions of law for the sunshine law. You know, and its lack of public communication engagement on a project such as a roundabout could have, you know, severe legal and political consequences. The legal thing is, you know, yeah, I believe it to be a sunshine law violation. I want to find out from somebody of authority that takes the time to go in and look at it, because obviously that is, hasn't happened. This could also be a procedural due process problem. You know, depending on the nature of the project and the potential impact on the property owners, a lack of public engagement could be seen as a violation of procedural due process. The official's admission supports that claim. He said, I didn't think they would, you know, object, so I didn't confer with them. You know, there are legal consequences here. If it is a, a violation of the sunshine law, you know, then you're voting against something that shouldn't be voted on. You know, the mistake is not a simple mistake or contractual error. It's a, it's a, it's a contract that was made, you know, in the dark. And the, the people that'll speak to you in a few minutes will let you know that they didn't know anything about this contract and that they didn't feel that, you know, there was enough in there. And, you know, we have case law that says that wasn't enough to identify it. You know, I think curing the violation or getting an informal, getting a, an opinion is very important. But, you know, I do have an informal opinion that is published, you know, on the website at the Attorney General's Office where she talks about, you know, reasonable notice, you know, reasonably calculated to inform the public. You know, Pat Gleason put that all out there, you know, on, on there, talking about what adequate notice is and how it's done. So the thing is that, you know, I would just ask at this time that we honor the people, you know, and, you know, give, give us sufficient information that says we should either proceed or not proceed with this. If you, if they come back and say, this is not a sunshine law violation. This is not a problem. This has nothing to do with notice. If we get that opinion coming back, I'll vote for it. Okay? But the thing is, right now, what we're working on here is loss of public trust. We're working on possible political fallout. And there is definitely community opposition. The admission galvanizes public opposition to the project itself. It validates the community's concern and may lead to protest petitions or organized efforts to stop the project altogether. That's happening now. Okay? And, as I say, you know, the people over in Lakewood Ranch are not without means. You know, they have the legal means too, where they can be just as devastating as the developers. The thing is that what we need to do here is we need to sit back, take a pause, and say, hey, you know what? Let's find out that we're doing the right thing, and if we are, let's all do the right thing. That's all I have.
I'll be brief, Mr. Chair. Thank you. On May 6th, the commission voted to negotiate termination of reimbursement agreement. Decision followed complaints from residents about the plan, roundabout. That time, we, staff was instructed to go to S M R. S M R came back and said, no, we would want, we're here moving forward with the roundabout. So the citizens were duly noticed because in the next month, it was a month between that meeting and the money, meeting on August 7th. And we, we went to Lakewood Ranch, we went to S M R. I'm not defending them. I'm defending the process of a contract that we have signed. And my county attorney sat there and told me, this is not a sunshine violation. And I trust her opinion, like all of you are trusting her opinion on other litigation that's coming down, that is involved right now. So I trust her opinion. She says it's not sunshine. I trust her opinion on sunshine. She said the director is not, does not subject sunshine. He's not subject sunshine. I trust that she's been in this job a long time. She's been with this, I was proud to hire her as our county attorney. Before that, she was our intimate, best intimate domain attorney we had in the county attorney's office. And the contract before that, and understand, S M R is a D R I. Their D R I right, they have D R, rights under D R I for mass, for transit. And I will tell you that probably when that became forward, Commissioner Bearden, under the, the, how it was labeled, is that a traffic study was going to be done. Traffic study came back and they said, look, the best thing to do is to have a roundabout at this for traffic flow. I'm not traffic engineer, neither are you, neither am I up on this board. So I trust staff's opinion of how to move traffic through Manatee County the best way we possibly can. So, I mean, we've negotiated, they've come back and said, no. I don't, I don't think if we continue negotiations, it's going to get us anywhere else with, with S M R. That's their decision. And I, I just, that's the reason I brought my motion, is just to keep this, move, let's move it forward. I have, this motion, my motion has nothing to do with sunshine or anything like that. It's the motion to move the process forward as we agree to in a reimbursement agreement on the roundabout. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I mean, I think the main point that I'm trying to make is that this was deceptive in the way that it was written. And you were the chair at that time, and you had the opportunity to look over the agenda and say, you know what? This can be changed. Let's change this to the University Parkway and Legacy Boulevard. You, you have the opportunity as the chairman of that time during this time, this vote, to make sure that we weren't being deceptive, to make sure we double-checked everything on that agenda before it was noticed for a vote. And it just seems to be, and it seems to be the public, whether you agree with it or not, and what, what your opinion is, you know, you believe it or not. To the public, it looks like it was deceptive. And I can understand why they believe it was deceptive, because it wasn't labeled properly. So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So moving forward, on any transportation issue that comes under consent, you want it to be labeled roundabout road, avenue, bridge, trolley, whatever, to make sure that
That's what we're labeling this right now.
Well, that's because, that's because the transportation study came back.
Why don't we, why don't we label this exact same way we did with the consent agenda item back in November?
In November?
Why?
It came forward, sir.
It's deceptive.
It was not deceptive.
That's why. It was deceptive.
You don't understand how D R I works.
Plus, I have the board, Mr. Chair.
You gave up the board.
I did not give up the board, and I didn't give him permission to come back and forth. No. He's being deceptive in, in regards to, he didn't look, it was his job and his responsibility to double-check the agenda, and this commissioner did not do that.
Sir, the county administrators, it's a county administrator. If you knew anything.
No, no. I do know. You control the freaking, you control the agenda.
Don't make me hit my gavel.
You can, you control the agenda, Commissioner Ron. You put things on and take things off.
That's literal, that's, that's not how this works.
Oh, I disagree with you on that. I disagree with you on that. You have a lot of influence as the chairman on what goes on and what, how things are written, that's on that agenda, and the majority of this aboard would agree with me on that. So that's all I have to say about that.
The majority of the board has never been chair. Commissioner McCann, you're up.
Last thing I want to say is, I don't want this to be contentious between board members.
That would have been awesome like an hour ago to start with that.
Yes, it would have. But again, I, I, I like what you said, Commissioner Ron. I'm glad you said that, because again, you know, that, that applies to, you know, proper voting too. You really want to go into that now? I think we could probably discuss that at some other time, you know? That'll be fine. We can do that in your commissioner comments. That would be great. I have a few things to discuss there too. But the thing is that I have to ask you right now, did you just make the statement that they had notice because you made that motion and on August 6th, you, and, you know, you went over there after a meeting on May 6th and talked to them after May 6th?
Who are you referring to?
When this happened last year? I think if they could actually read back what you said, I think you might have misspoke. The problem is, they didn't have notice. They're going to tell you that. You said, you just got done saying, on May 6th, when we made that thing, we went over there and talked to them, so they had notice. They didn't have notice of what was voted on on November 12th. So if that's what you're considering notice, then we have to make sure that we clear the record.
No, sir. We, we noticed on November 12th in the consent agenda, the Lakewood Ranch, Harrow Estate, Lakewood Ranch Boulevard, and transportation. The transportation, because we have a lot of transportation issues here. So it was probably staff was directed at time, I'm not going to go back to November 10th and pull the record or whatever. But they, they were directed at that time to do, probably do a traffic study on that intersection at Lakewood Ranch, or at, on Lakewood Ranch Boulevard at Legacy and Deer. And they came back, and it doesn't have to be, it doesn't, it's a, it's a traffic study.
Commissioner Ron, if I, if I may, I don't want to interrupt everyone, but I feel like everything, everybody is saying, I've heard four other times today, much less the other times. We've, we've discussed this, we all understand where people are coming from. I respect everyone's opinion where, but we don't, that's the third time traffic studies have inevitably been done, has been mentioned during this conversation. I get it.
We need to hear from the county attorney on this.
We've, we've heard from the county attorney. She's just going to say the same thing a third time as well. What we need to hear from is what's left of the public, because you chased everybody else out toe bricks. We're down to two. Three. So I'm going to, without objection, open this up to public comment, to let them speak, because they've been extremely patient, running well into their lunch break and our lunch break. So I am opening this up to public comment. No one's on the board, so whoever wants to come up.
Carol Cooper, Lakewood Ranch. Honorable commissioners, we've made many attempts to help you resolve the contract dispute with Lakewood Ranch Corporate Park LLC's reimbursement agreement for transportation improvements. In front of us, an additional document presented to you on August 11th, 2025, of many residents' logical concerns. This is documented both with acceptance personally by Dana Summers and in newspaper print. This and other documents give us the right to file the motion to compel. We are here to present you, the commissioners, the public, and for the public record, a motion to compel. This motion states clearly the request for all discovery, along with opposing parties' responses and objections, as we've learned so far, and the reasons the information is needed. You've now read and heard our arguments. They are accompanying this letter of intent with the attached motions to compel. Also are copies of our relevant discovery requests and responses. Due to the quick movement of this process and the lack of time for the citizens of Manatee County to file the motions to compel, we have no other means but to present here in the public forum and expect, along with a formal request, with intention of good faith, allowable time for us to register with the court. Unless you would be willing to file a motion between you, the commissioners, to propose a motion to accept the motions to compel, due to the pressure of time and lack of transparency, which has left us without full knowledge and of all aspects of the situation. There are several items, and I'll present this to the clerk for, for the commissioner, The motions will be stated, but here's a couple of the highlights. The Public Works Director ceases to be considered staff when he's given policy decision-making function, entering into a reimbursement agreement without attorney oversight. The attorney didn't approve anything. The attorney didn't see anything on the reimbursement agreement. It's not a template that was designed by the county attorney. This is something that your director negotiated, and Commissioner Ron, with all due respect, you cited several times, studies. Where are they? Because they've never been presented. There are no studies. Your Public Works Director submitted a capital improvement plan for intersection improvements at University Parkway, Legacy Boulevard, Deer Drive, and is listed on the budget, line item number 356, and it's still on your, on your budget. So the traffic studies were probably done to support the C I P. Certainly not for this reimbursement agreement, because there has been nothing there. Commissioner Cruz, I'm sorry. I know that it's very boring sitting here, but I, I'll try to go quicker. We're asking for a motion to compel the commissioners to terminate the reimbursement agreement, which is not reflected on the budget and which will cause harm to the public. We're asking for a motion to compel the commissioners to move forward with the C I P, P J T R 02287, accounted for in the budget for improvements to the intersection. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If you'll give me just a moment, please. Good day. Again. Again, my name for the record is Hillary Harter. And I reside in Lakewood Ranch Phase One, which is a little bit different, I think, for you to understand, because Lakewood Ranch is thousands and thousands of acres, if I recall, and I've only been here three years. So I'm still learning. I am the author of the letter that I sent to the commissioners and gave to Dana Summers on August 11th, here, in the lobby here. I hope you've all read it. I am also the author that sent it to the Bradenton Times, and he felt it's so important that he put it in the letter to the editor on the 12th of August. I am, unbeknownst to you, I have put in a full page in the East Observer for this Thursday, two days too late, because I didn't know about this being an added agenda, a continuation, or whoever's agenda it is. You know why I did that? Do you know why I put that full-page ad that you haven't seen yet? Because it's still out in the ether until Thursday. Because people don't know, they don't know the ramifications, they didn't even know it was a roundabout that was going to change, it's going to be a catastrophic lifestyle change, not only for Lakewood Ranch, because this is not a back, not in my backyard. Not in my backyard. Any one of you might be going to Waterside, you may be going east, you may decide to go to Myaca or to the New Bornside Road for a road trip. It affects everyone, and it affects Sarasota County. Okay? I'm also here to represent the people that had to leave, so I have their signatures that say that I can speak for them.
You cannot, though.
Oh, yes, sir, I cannot.
Oh, I promise you, our rules do not allow for that.
Well, you better think about it because.
You cannot have proxies, you cannot allocate your time to other people. That's a rule that's been in place since Manatee County was founded. We have never once allowed that, and I've never once been on this board in five years where someone's been able to do that with any chair or any composition of this board. The only time we allow that is during quasi judicial. If you get five signatures, you get 10 minutes instead of the five minutes of a quasi judicial. This is not a quasi judicial hearing.
Fine. Let me remind you that people want to speak, they want to have their feelings read, heard. Also, I have the motions to compel, motions to compel, which have been recorded by this fellow, this gal here. I'd love to read them to you.
But we, we've heard them, and your time is up. So I'm giving you a few, I'm giving you, I'm giving you some leeway to, to conclude your statements, but not to read packets of motions. And, and the public does not make motions on this board.
Well then, how do we get the public to know what the motions to, to compel are?
Hand them to the clerk, and they'll be included in the minutes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I will remind you that I'm not here to cause you any harm. I'm here to protect you from harm.
We appreciate it, ma'am.
I certainly hope you do.
Hannah, did you want to present those? That you're waiting? Did you want to put it in?
No, you have the legal.
I was unaware it was an envelope.
Good afternoon, Bronsheer Country Club, Twin Hills Terrace. I have great appreciation, again, for all of you. I'd, I'd vote for all of you. I come from Minnesota, think you all, you do a great job here. Have a significant disagreement with the way the process worked here. It's, as, as Commissioner Cruz said, we've talked about it endlessly. But to me, it's just bad business, bad government, the way things happened. There, I, to my wife's dismay, I do listen and, or go directly or to the C D D five meetings. No one knew about this up until this May, this May 7th, or whatever the date was. That's inexcusable. I don't, and these are, these are active community members. We have a great C D D. You, you folks know this, C D D five and two, great members. There is no possible way that they should not have known about this roundabout situation. And the, the other thing I would say is, I think we do need, as citizens, need the other thing I would say is, I think we do need, as citizens, need to see these traffic studies with respect, not generic to roundabouts and intersections, but with respect to that specific intersection. There's very, there are, I'm no traffic expert, but I'll tell you, there's some things that are unique to that, that are likely not gonna allow a roundabout to be as effective as it might be. And then the CIP, I'll just end without, Commissioner Sadiq referred to it on some other matters today, the CIP. Across this country, I don't even know why we have CIPs. It must be, it's just a wish list, because things change, they go back and forth. I've been on numerous city council meetings, that they're essentially meaningless. As Ms. Cooper referred, the intersection still refers to just a traffic light, I think, if you look at the CIP today. So, if we're gonna have CIPs that are financially meaningful, let's make sure that they are meaningful and that they're prioritized, so the public really knows what's going on. But again, thank you for your time, and sorry we got this disagreement, but this is a big deal in our area. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Cheryl Scheid. I'm also from Lakewood Ranch, I also live in Country Club, and I'm here to actually ask you to consider the issues, actually, that Dr. McCann raised. Specifically, I'm gonna read from some of the legal documents. Manatee County Traffic Control Standards 101, 1,001.7, paragraph C. Manatee County standards shall conform to the uniform system adopted by FDOT, pursuant to chapter 316 of Florida statutes. The FDOT manual on intersectional control evaluation, section 2.2B, an evaluation is required with major reconstruction of a signalized intersection, ICE Stage One, requires collecting and retaining minimum information traffic data, multimodal uses and environmental data. ICE Stage Two requires public input. I also would like to indicate, the commissioners are compelled to request and receive all documentation from Public Works regarding this SIP, PJTR 02287, and the scope for the changes to a roundabout. Also, to request and receive all documentation from the county attorney regarding the breakdown of costs associated with termination of this agreement, as well as the associated costs to rebuild contract for the required improvements. We're asking for a motion to compel the commissioners to terminate this agreement without the documentation. Thank you for your time and diligent consideration. We know it's, we know this is a controversial issue, we're hoping to get it resolved peacefully, and hopefully in the right manner. Thank you.
I guess it's good afternoon. Thank you all for letting us talk. This is my fourth meeting here, I guess, in various formats. Matt Kengemmy from Lakewood Ranch. Thank you, sorry about that. This has been going around, Mr. Kraus, you don't, you don't wanna, you don't want anything but a circle throughout all of Florida, and you've publicly ever said that. If it was up to you, you'd put a circle in every intersection in Florida. That's okay, that's your opinion, I have an opinion, you have an opinion. You all here have said, especially people voted against putting the traffic light and expanding the lanes, you all said that we should hear the people's voice. You said that on other issues. We want to hear the people's voice. Now you don't want to hear the people's voice. You also said about how we spend the money. Mrs. Sadiq, he said we should spend the money prudently. You're spending money, you're building a circle in an area, two-lane circle, two-lane road, that's what you're building. A two-lane, Lakewood Ranch is gonna still have two lanes. You're building 6,000 houses south and east of us. That's gonna cause a lot more traffic. Two lanes are gonna be useless. In two, three years, that circle will come out, and you'll expand it to three lanes, and you'll make the turn lane into Lakewood Ranch longer. How many of you live in the Country Club? Do any of you live in the Country Club? You don't use that, you don't use that exit and entrance every day. You aren't on University Parkway every day, I'm sure. You don't know what that's all about. So, you're voting on something that you know nothing about. You hear somebody say, "It should be a circle." Why? Why should it be a circle? From 41 to Lorraine Road is all lights. It's a main drag from the airport, people going east, and you're gonna put a circle in the middle of it? Think of what you're saying, common sense. Why a circle? It's safer. Baloney, it's not safer. If I have a circle out in Idaho with two people a year, and I have a circle in Washington DC with 100 people a year, it's a big difference. The averages don't make. You said the circle's better nationally. I don't believe that by any sense of imagination. It's an area that it's going in, is what you gotta look at. Studies? I haven't seen any studies, I haven't heard about any studies. Who said a circle's better? Because it's safer? That's baloney. It's a shame that you are voting for this. It seems like you've already made up your mind. You don't really care what we want. Mr. Bearden is right, you don't care what we want. You want to put a circle there for whatever reason. I told you the last time, New Jersey's taking them all out because they don't work. But you're gonna go through with it, because you guys voted for it back in November of last year without even letting anybody know. Thank you very much for changing my day. But I've been here since 2000, I bought my house in 2001, I moved in permanently in 2011. How many accidents have there been at that intersection that a circle is better? Nobody's explained that. You're just doing what you want to do. And for Mr. Jensen, that guy doesn't give a crap about anybody. When he tells me he wants to put a statue of himself in the middle of a circle, that's a childish thought. He's a bully, and SMR is doing things their way. Thank you very much. My time is up, but my emotions and my feelings and your, my respect for you, who voted for the circle, I have no respect for you. I'm sorry.
That's very nice. I have one caller, I'm guessing there's no one else here, since there's nobody else in the public in this room, unless you want to talk about... I have one caller, caller 445.
For the record, Glenn Gibbolina. What a nightmare. I got a couple of questions. One, listen to the people that have spoken before me. Two, you knew this was gonna be a contentious matter, but you refused to put it on time certain, so you could scatter the rest of the group that had responsibilities to get back to, families, kids, and maybe jobs. So, let's not do a time certain, right? Screw the citizens, we're gonna just roll right over and not listen to them. Where's the other half? Where's Rex Jensen? In all this time, all this time, has he ever sent a representative or himself show up and say, "You know what? I'm gonna represent my, I'm gonna tell you what we need," and explain it to the public? I don't think I've ever seen a man in meetings, nor any of his employees. He must have the mouthpiece, some mouthpieces on the board speaking for him. This 4-3 vote's gotta stop, and it's gonna show, it's gonna show in the voting polls, I can tell you that right now. You should listen to the district commissioner, you should listen to the people that live out there, and this is, this is a travesty that this goes on. You were elected, and as the citizens and voters, we have the ability to instruct you in what we want to do. Regardless of your personal opinions, the people that live out there are affected by that, have the right to instruct you, to give them what they need and what they want. It's unbelievable that that has done that. Again, mediation, scrap it. This guy doesn't want to come to the table, scrap it. Start from zero. The money's not there, the funding's been pulled, there's, you know, it's like a cloud in the title. There may be some sunshine violations, and I believe there are. So, you should err on the side of caution, instead of just rolling through this, rolling over public comments, and, you know, "Oh, well, this was done by the last..." The last board was a developer's dream team. Why do you think we got rid of three of you guys? It's unbelievable. This has gotta stop. You have to start listening to us, and start respecting us, or it's gonna show down the road, I can tell you that right now. I feel for the people that went up there. I feel they've dealt a bad hand, either by staff or by the last board. It's unacceptable. Unacceptable that they have to be treated this way, and unacceptable that they are not informed in a proper manner. So, get your act together, or we're gonna get it together for you at the voting booth. For the record, Glenn Gadsley, Gibbolina. There we go.
Your alarm was off, you still had five seconds. Okay, there's nobody else on the phone, and nobody else to speak in here, so I'll close public comment. I have two people on the board. I just want to make sure everyone's aware of time, because I'm sure there's brand-new things to discuss here relative to this. Three people on the board. It is almost 1:00. I did not expect this to be the second time we have two hours of conversation on this. I have three people on. My point is, I have to give, I do, because I'm trying to keep... I'm asking everyone to be succinct in their comments, because I need to take a lunch break, and people have meaningful commissioner comments, they're now going to get delayed until after lunch. So, if we are not short in time, then I'm going to break us before we even vote. So, Commissioner Sadiq.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Carol said it best in the comments, this is a contract dispute, nothing more. I'm not going to entertain a motion for the board to get involved in the middle of what will likely be a private dispute, that's not this board's job. So, I think that's, that's just preposterous to me. If you feel that you've suffered a damage or harm as a result of a traffic circle, then sell your house and let me know how much the increase in your property value was, or leave. I don't know what else to tell you. I think some of the comments are just interesting when it comes to traffic circles, and I've heard all of it from emails, saying they bring crime and drugs to kill people. You know, we've heard this comment about listen to the district commissioner, not shooting from the hip and more. We do that, and I think if there were a clear termination clause, then I'd happy, be happy to support it. But I think the reality is, either we spend $3-plus million fighting a lawsuit over, which will likely show this county had, was found to be breach of contract, or we just put a roundabout in there and move on to the next thing. And I'm not willing to waste taxpayer dollars in this era of government efficiency, fighting a wasteful lawsuit. The other thing I, I abhor from this board are accusations about our staff, especially after, especially now, acting improperly. Chad is a good man, he works hard, and so do a lot of our staff. So, I would tell you guys to control yourselves when it comes to making comments and accusations about our staff. They do things with the full faith and intention that comes from board support. So, if you have problems about supporting items that do not have termination clauses, then make a motion and bring those items forward. I just don't see this conversation to be genuine. It's just deceitful at best. So, I'm gonna be voting in support of this, just because there's no clear termination clause, and this is just going to be a waste of taxpayer resources. That's all I have.
I'll make it real quick, Mr. Chair. You know, it's very disrespectful to say, come up here and say, "You know what? If you don't like it, just sell your house." That's such a disrespectful statement. But that doesn't surprise me, knowing that the support of somebody that might have said, you know, "I'll just put my statue so that, in the middle of the roundabout, so that you can see it every day," you know, you might as well put the statue, if that's the case, and that's what was said, with the middle finger up in the air. That's what the statue should look like, really. I mean, let's just be real here. But it doesn't surprise me that a disrespectful statement would be made such as that. And, you know, I just want to start beginning to see a little bit more change, and I would encourage the constituents to email them and send out emails to give them your, all your opinion, so that they know loud and clear what, what you guys really wanted at that particular intersection there. Thank you so much for coming out, giving us your public comment, I appreciate it. I know you took a lot of time out of your day, and I would ask this board to be respectful to our constituents. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I guess I, I really just have a question, comment is, Commissioner Bearden is at-large, Commissioner McCann is District Five, where this is occurring, and I guess my, my question is, why, why is this so important to our four commissioners that are kind of else... I guess, I, I'm a little confused as to why, why is there so much passion against this? Are we, we mentioned pride, we mentioned, you know, I'm mentioning, I'm speaking for Rex Jensen, I'm sorry, but he didn't get notified that this was going on. He's not here right now. I guess I just not understanding why this is so important for the four of you who are not voting with us, who are voting for the people, or even trying to move toward better negotiations and, you know, what is the impetus? I don't understand that. I'm looking at this from a process and procedure that I think we've exposed a little bit of improvements we could use on it, and I totally relate. I mean, I've been fighting for, for years to get signs that are, are actually beneficial and aren't written in Egyptian hieroglyphics and hidden in the woods, so that people could have proper notice. So, maybe that's why I, I see this as a proper notice, a proper procedure type of issue. I guess I'm not understanding what's the motivation to plunge into this, rather than look at it from a transparency, accountability, and we are getting into those, you know, ethics and civility issues too. Why is this so important that we have four commissioners that are ignoring this, ignoring the procedural issues, ignore, what's, what's the motivation? I know the motivation for my fellow commissioner in District Five is representing his people, and at-large commissioner seems to be representing the people, but I guess what I don't understand is why is this so important to, with all due respect, why is this so important? Is it about the money? Is it about, do you really worship roundabouts that much that, that we can't have a negotiation? I guess that's where my biggest issue is. Why aren't we civilly handling this? Why is it so important that somebody wins versus we do something right? Is it more important to win, or is it more important to do something right? Because I don't understand your motivation. You can laugh at me all you want.
I'm not laughing, I'm waiting for you to take a breath, so I can answer your question.
Why is a roundabout in their neighborhood more important to you, or you, or you, or you, when you don't live there, and that man represents? Just explain it to me. If you want to say that it's money, and, and we're gonna get sued, or whatever it is, but I don't understand the rancor. I don't understand why you're dealing with something that... Just negotiate, be a statesman. Why are we arguing about something that has no effect personally on you, but these people are saying that it has a personal effect on them? And to be statesman-like, negotiate. You can't negotiate anything, it's either gotta be one way or the other way with something. What's the motivation? I don't understand the motivation, or the fact that you can sit there with a smirky look on your face and feel that that is professional and mature, George, really.
I noticed, I, 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 I noticed, I noticed you didn't comment on Commissioner Bearden's smirky look, because he's voting your way, he's voting your way.
First, this must be the chair, okay?
I've been trying, I've, I've...
Oh, we're gonna do comparison studies? That's the chair.
You gave up the board, I now have the board. It's the first time I, it's, it's literally, it's literally the first second I've spoken, there's an elapsed time on the bottom, I have not put myself on the board this whole time. You asked a question 47 times, what's the motivation? I don't care if this is a roundabout or a light, I don't care. This doesn't affect my life. my life. I just drove through this intersection over this weekend, and I drive through it for a favor, because I go down the Waters side, and I live on the east side of town. But I'll go with either one of them. It doesn't matter. But there's a difference between governing and pandering. And governing is doing the right thing, even when it's difficult. This contract, for better or worse, was signed. This contract was approved 7-0 on a consent by four people sitting up here. All four of them, myself included, had a right to a briefing and were given a briefing. All four of them were given additional information. The cover letter on this item was very detailed in terms of every step of the process that got to where this roundabout was going to be. And that board, having access to that contract, and having access to the cover letter and access to staff, voted in favor of it. You may disagree with that, and some people who voted in favor of it may have changed their mind, but it was still voted on, which then became a valid contract. And I've spoken to our county attorney about this, and I've reviewed the information, and there is no termination clause in there, meaning this is a valid contract voted on by this board to move forward with, even as unfortunate as you may think it is. And at the end of the day, we sign lots of contracts as government, and we sign on the good faith that what we're doing as a government is going to be valid, because every two years, some of us change. And so we cannot keep signing contracts where people think every two years their contract may just get yanked out from under them, based upon the will of a random new board that shows up with a different mentality. That's not how you do proper governance. So I don't care which way it goes relative to what is built there. If everyone came together and said, "Yep, let's do the light," I would have been perfectly fine with that. I listened to both sides during the roundabout light controversy over on Lorraine. But right now, this decision has been made. This is not a discussion about whether or not roundabouts are better or lights are better. It has to do with whether contract law is better, or violating a contract without a termination clause is better, and whether or not that is money and time this county is willing to fight over, where we may have to spend $3 million to terminate a contract, and then spend millions of dollars fixing the lights that were already inadequate, which justified the need for improving the intersection anyway. So I am voting yes, in order to keep moving this forward, but not because I'm voting because I love roundabouts, which I do. But I'm voting because I love contract law and honoring what this board, in whatever makeup it was, agreed to, so that people can trust Manatee County going forward. Commissioner Ballard, you were on... Yes, that's... No, we already have public comments, sir. Sorry.
So I will add just a quick comment, which my feelings for supporting this are very, very similar to Commissioner Cruz. It's a valid contract. We have to be able to... People who we contract with have to be able to rely on our contracts. I have no credible evidence that an appropriate procedure was not followed. It was a public meeting. It was publicly noticed. It was on a consent agenda. All of our commissioners had their briefings. The item itself, whether you believe that it was misleading or not, it was on, and it had all of the backup documentation that anybody could have found. So given that, there's no reason to end a valid contract. I understand that people are upset about it, that they don't like it, but it went through the appropriate procedures, and people have to be able to rely on our government's word, and that we won't be swayed by just some people who feel upset about it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'd have to say that governance is transparency, and I just don't believe that this whole process was transparent from the beginning. And I'd have to disagree, because we have been in this county where we have terminated contracts. Don't let that fool you. That has happened in the past through this county government. And so, you know, I think that's what people want, is transparency. And what is that motivation? I don't think it necessarily has to be the motivation of whether it be a light or a roundabout. There's different motivations behind this. And, you know, based on what I've seen in the past, I can see where those motivations would come from, and how people would make their decisions and contemplate whether or not they should vote one way or the other, right? There's different motivations. I could tell you, being on this board almost three years, I recognize those motivations. You know, unfortunately, in politics, motivations come from different sources, right, that base people, that help people make the decisions that they make on an everyday basis. Unfortunately, you know, it doesn't always favor the people. And so I will have to say that, you know, Commissioner Feltz had a valid question on the reasons why those motivations would, you know, come about in a way to why we are fighting so hard on this. The job hasn't even started yet, right? We can continue to negotiate, you know. If this board had any type of backbone, we could go back and say, "Hey, you know what? This is what we would like to see," you know, "and if it's compensation," or whatever it might be, "let's talk about that." But I don't know why we're dying on a hill on a roundabout. This doesn't make sense to me as well, Commissioner Feltz. I mean, why would we die on a hill on a roundabout? We didn't die on that hill last time. When red shirts came in the door, we said, "No, we're going to put a light there," right? And we didn't die on that hill, right? But, you know, I feel like, I just feel like this is... The optics is really bad in this, this whole situation. And, you know, I'm just going to pass this over to Commissioner McCann, because I'm curious to see, you know, hearing what he has to say. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. McCann.
Very quickly, I hear you all talking again about valid contracts. Contract law is much more complex than the briefings you've been given. By the way, I would like to ask real quick, how many people actually got briefed on this since it was actually put on the agenda on Friday? How many people got a briefing on Item 35? Please raise your hand.
I did, because it was the exact same item that was on two weeks ago, and I did my briefing that time, because we were all invited to briefing. It's the exact same item. You forget it in two weeks?
Well, they also had a briefing that you talk about November 12th, but that wouldn't be valid today either. The thing is that...
Two weeks.
The thing is that, you know, this is no simple contractual mistake. This situation is different from a typical contractual mistake between two private parties. The mistake isn't about the terms of the contract itself. So you can keep saying there's no clause in there. Keep doing that. I am going to get an opinion on whether this is a sunshine violation or not. And if it does turn out to be a sunshine violation and it's void, I'll make sure that you each get a complaint with the Ethics Commission, okay? The mistake isn't about the terms of the contract itself, but about the process by which the public body entered into it. The Florida sunshine law creates a public policy requirement that overrides standard contract principles. I don't think anybody can argue about that. The public's right to open government is paramount, okay? I'm done talking. I think there's a good enough record here that anybody could subpoena this, and they can get by Freedom of Information Act anyway, and I'll be adding to it in commissioner comments. So, you know, vote your conscience.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Ron, second by Commissioner Cruz. You can cast your votes now. As approved, four votes to three, with Commissioners Feltz, McCann, and Bearden in opposition. We're down to commissioner comments, but it sounds like we have a fair bit of them, and I have to allow people to have lunch. So we have no choice but to take a break for lunch. We will break till 2:00. Because he has a lot of commissioner comments. He said he has commissioner comments. Wait. Okay, okay, never mind. I need to give a break. I haven't gavelled anything. But I have to give them a break. I have to give them a break. But they need to eat. There's no citizens. There's nobody on the phone. Fine. We'll go to commissioner comments. Commissioner Feltz, commissioner comments. Commissioner Sadiq, commissioner comments. I'm going to get a phone call from the clerk on this one.
What, for me?
No, because I'm holding everybody.
Hold our staff.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Heard a lot about listening to district commissioners today by Commissioner Feltz and Bearden, quite a few others too. A lot of genuflecting on the nature of that with roundabouts. Commissioner McCann, again, I do apologize. I just couldn't support you on the roundabout issue. I just didn't feel like I could. But I do appreciate your support on the library. I do intend to bring that forward, and I expect, and I know where the lines are drawn by certain commissioners here, and I'll be making sure that anyone running in my district knows that there are commissioners on this board that have voted on termination contracts, that did not have termination clauses, that receive developer donations. I will let them know that there are commissioners on this board that did not want to fund fixes to properties, including the Maritime Museum and more. I'll let them know about commissioners that might be running in my district next year that want to see certain government properties, like the library, sold to developers. There's a lot of conversation...
Can we try to bring this back to some of the civility?
Mr. Chair, there's been a lack of serious consideration and thought for what actual district commissioners want. So I'm just letting some of my colleagues know that if you actually care, then I'll certainly be looking forward to seeing what you have to say about items I bring to the board. But right now, these concerns are really genuine. Frankly, I think there's just a lot of concern I have also about conduct towards staff. And, Mr. Chair, I do want to see you control those meetings a little bit more, because I'm getting tired of chasing a good staff. And we already get criticized by our constituents for not delivering on services in a timely manner. But we need to start holding back some commissioners that are targeting staff and forcing, you know, them in uncomfortable situations, when they've done nothing wrong. But I expect to see, for all this blathering and bloated talk about supporting district commissioners, I certainly expect to see some of that in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I appreciate your constructive criticism. I would point out, I pretty consistently always made sure to defend staff. I'm actively trying to defend our clerks, to give them a break. The only staff that was mentioned today was a director, but he was directly germane to the topic at hand. I couldn't prevent people from bringing him up when it literally was the cause of a motion. I had to allow some flexibility there. There was no offense to Chad, if he's watching this. There was no offense whatsoever. I defend you like I do everybody else. But it was actually part of the discussion, so I had to allow that discussion to be had. Otherwise, I'd be compromising the discussion. Who else? Who has nothing to say? Say it and check you off. Commissioner Ballard, do you have any comments? Commissioner Bearden. All right. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My comments will be brief. On 8-7 land use meeting, my right as a duly elected official to vote was denied by the chair. And not being allowed to vote on an item that I had seconded Commissioner Sadiq's motion, the vote, we wouldn't be here today. The vote would have carried 4-3, because the chair knew where my vote was heading. We know that Commissioner McCann, as a chair, knew that I was having technical difficulties on Zoom, but I was present. I was having speaking issues with being allowed back in as a panelist on Zoom and not as an attendee. In fact, both Commissioner Cruz and Commissioner Ballard informed the chair that I was on the Zoom call. Not only denied my vote to write, but it denied my citizens of District Four the representation on the board on a vote that would have come through. This board and the chairman have made every, every... Every time someone's been on Zoom, we have made them be heard. We've allowed them to vote, and my right was not afforded to me. In fact, Commissioner Cruz has recessed meetings in order to make sure that commissioners have the opportunity to speak or be heard on a vote. My right under State Statute 286.012 was denied. We have an Attorney General's opinion that said, "No public official, no public officer shall be prohibited from voting his or her official capacity on any matter." I was denied. Such case is that the county, the state attorney, or sorry, the Attorney General has opined during a temporary absence of a member during a meeting, such member should be regarded as being present, and the meeting should be recessed or any vote be postponed until the temporary member can return. I was not afforded that in that motion during that meeting. And the vote was called, and I was not afforded the ability to vote. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Comments. Commissioner McCann.
Yes. In Florida, including for the Manatee County Commission, the key to taking an official vote is the presence of a quorum. A quorum is defined as the majority of commissioners being physically present at the meeting, okay? If the quorum is present, the vote can proceed. The absent commissioner vote is not counted. The outcome of the vote is determined by a majority of those who are present and voting. The absent commissioner's absence does not stop the vote from happening, as long as the majority of the board is there to take action. If quorum is not present, then you can stop the meeting. Florida sunshine law, which we have a lot of problems with, and I happen to take CLE on it purposely, requires that official decisions are made at a public meeting. While a commissioner can sometimes participate in a meeting electronically, if there are extraordinary circumstances, they must still be able to participate in discussions and be heard by others. The law also makes it clear that a member of a board who is present at a meeting is required to vote aye, yea, or nay, or abstain if there's a conflict of interest. A commissioner who is not present cannot vote. Your interpretation of law is wrong, but it's like that often. And just to let you know, so the thing is that in that meeting, you know, you had the chance to contact the chair and tell him you had problems. You've got my phone number. I've got on my phone where you gave my phone number to KVO, because you're a good friend of his, okay? You've got my phone number. Why you're communicating with other members during a vote that you're voting in is very questionable.
All I did was told the chair, Chair Cruz, and I told another commissioner...
Chair Cruz was not Chair Cruz at that meeting. It was Chair McCann at that meeting.
I told them I was having technical difficulties. If you're going to accuse me of something, bring it.
I don't think we need to discuss this. You know, we know exactly where you're coming from. That's not a problem. And you said I should anticipate your vote. I always anticipate your vote. Whatever the developers want, you're voting for. There's no doubt about it.
Sir, I didn't publicly attack you, but that's all you can do, because that's all you got. So don't publicly attack me.
This is commissioner comments, not commissioner fight. You guys can go in the hallway and beat the hell out of each other when we're done here. But right now, it's commissioner comments, please.
Okay. The commissioner comment again is, you know, I believe there's a sunshine violation. They keep asking for motivation. During that last meeting, Commissioner Cruz said he did not take any money from Rex Jensen, but he did take $1,000 from Galvano Grimes. So did Tal Sadiq, take $1,000 from Galvano Grimes. You know, I want to put this into the record, okay? I knew you would bring up the technical difficulties. According to our bylaws...
What item are you putting that into the record exactly? I also took $2,000 from a retired couple in Panther Ridge, so I abstained from anything relevant to Panther Ridge.
Yeah, you also took money from Neil Communities.
I did not. I did not. That is a lie. Please put that on the record.
Put that on the record, that he didn't take money from Neil Communities, because this is public record. We can pull this off the Manatee Supervisor's election sheet. Now, just to finish up, I think the motivation is obvious here. I think that, you know, this is developer-controlled. I think they have a stranglehold on this county. I think tomorrow, or Thursday, actually, we'll show exactly what's going on. And, you know, I'm kind of disappointed when I get the ethics opinions. Like I say, we will act accordingly, because they already told me. They're going to start asking the ethics opinions. They already told me that they're going to, you know, the Government Efficiency Committee. And, you know, they're already told me they're writing letters to the governor. We have a problem here with, you know, personalities and conflicts, definitely. We do not defer to commissioners, like we said we were going to back in March. We don't follow our own policy and procedures. That's a problem. The reason that I deferred to you today is because you're the commissioner for that area, and you brought up something historic and important. That's the reason I gave you the vote. So the thing is that, you know, again, I wouldn't be voting affirmative on this, because I believe there's a sunshine violation, and I think it's a problem. So that's all I have to say, and I'm done with comments. And again, you know, this is all public record. We're speaking in the sunshine here, which should happen all the time.
Okay. I'm the last one, and I know everyone's packing up, so God forbid I get five seconds to talk over here. Jeez. I do apologize. Here's my comment. It very well could be. It very well could be. I'm trying to do this, because I think it's in the best interest of everybody here on this board, and if you want to disagree with me, then you'll have that opportunity to do so. Thursday was intended to be a meeting about wetlands and 2-1-2-8, because this board agreed unanimously, it was 7-0 for one transmittal, 6-1 for the other transmittal, to fight in court over this. It's become apparent to everybody that there is no intention of people from Tallahassee allowing us to fight in court. Everything is teeing up for the fact that they intend to just try to suspend people from office for doing it. After hours on Friday, where it was too late for me to put it on this agenda, and I was respecting the timeline, we received two letters from Florida Commerce, all but basically saying what you're intending to do is violation of the law, and I do not think it is, but here's the reality of this situation, is you don't have to be right. We don't have to be correct. All Tallahassee has to do is have the implication of believing they're correct, and they can suspend us. The governor can't remove anyone from office. They can suspend us from office. Being removed is from the state senate, which doesn't meet for months. Once a majority is removed from office, then they have the statutory right to temporarily replace everybody. So, here's my concern, and I'll just lay it out here ahead of Thursday, is, here's the timeline, because you always have to weigh the pros and cons, and the risk-adjusted return. You vote in favor of this, and it goes to court, great. That's the best-case scenario we knew. However, the day after we make this motion on Thursday, Friday, the frequent flyer developer attorneys are going to run across the street and file a lawsuit. They probably already wrote it, because this was noticed. The minute they file the lawsuit, those ordinances get stayed, meaning the wetlands stay where they are, the 2-1-2-8 stays in our comprehensive plan, until those lawsuits, which are going to take over a year, get resolved. That's our best-case scenario, is we've proven a point, and then the comp plan stays the same. Our worst-case scenario is, we vote that through, and they attempt to suspend people from office, even if it's frivolous, because people say, "Oh, that's not going to happen." They literally just threatened to remove all of the city of Key West. They literally just threatened to remove all of the city of Fort Myers, and just two weeks ago, they literally threatened to remove all of Orange County, a massive county, the county commission, seven people. They threatened to remove them, and that board had enough wherewithal and conversation in Tallahassee, a six, it's six Democrats, one Republican. They certainly don't want to toe the line for people in Tallahassee, but they ran back and voted 5 to 2 to do what they were told, because they were told they were going to be removed from office. Here's my concern with this. This board is the most thoughtful board Manatee County's had for a long time. We've had some arguments here, don't get me wrong, but collectively speaking, we have done more good than other boards have done. We've been more thoughtful. If we run the risk of having a majority of this board, whomever those four, or five, or six, or seven are, the next day, it's going to get stayed, so your wetlands aren't going to be fixed, and your 2-1-2-8 is not going to be removed. But when new people come in, the first thing they have to do is say, "Hey, in the interest of Doge and saving money, we shouldn't fight these lawsuits. Let's just get rid of that wetland thing. Let's get rid of that 2-1-2-8 thing. Hey, we're being sued for impact fees. Let's just revert back on the impact fees and unwind all of that." Guess what? There's a project on 675. There's a project on Lockwood Ridge. There's a project on Lorraine, that are all in some level of mediation or lawsuit right now. They could say, "Let's end those lawsuits," and just bring them back and approve those things. That's what a board can do in the span of 60 to 90 days before the senate can ever have a hearing to even say, "Hey, you weren't supposed to remove those people." That ship has sailed. So if I have to weigh the pros and the cons of the best-case scenario versus the worst-case scenario, this worst-case scenario, as terrible as it is that there's a dystopian scenario where people could just remove people from office for disagreements over vague, burdensome language, it's still the fact. It's the fact that we're dealing with right now. So, if we come in and we vote no, and everyone agrees, "Hey, that's not best-case scenario," and I'm thinking about a couple of you, more than others, like, I'm thinking about you, Commissioner Felton, because your district has not had good representation in years.
I know. I got it.
Your district has not had good reputation, and you campaigned on removing these two things. And nobody in Manatee County believes that anybody on this board cares more about the wetlands and 2-1-2-8 than you. I'm giving you as much compliment as I possibly can. So you feel compelled, but at the same time, you, of all people here, cannot risk, I cannot risk District 1's representation for this. So, I, rather than try to bring this up for a vote, I, as chair, am just going to state that I'm canceling Thursday's meeting, and people can vote and rescind that, if they choose to rescind that, but if everyone keeps their mouth shut, then it gets, and you could all blame me, because I'm the one making this decision as a chair, and if everyone keeps their mouth shut, then nobody's going to get accused on Facebook of anything, and everybody can blame me. So I'm just saying, as chair, I am directing staff to cancel the land use meeting scheduled for Thursday, August 21, 2025, and to take all action necessary to notify the public of said cancellation through online posting and physical signage, and continue the scheduled advertised public hearing to no date certain. That's the end of my comments. That isn't even up for vote unless somebody wants to contest that, and then somebody can make a motion to contest the chair's decision. I have Commissioner Sadiq on the board.
Well, I shut my door down. I'll go to everybody else.
... mentioned and dialogued with, so I thought that I could probably-
No, then go ahead, then go ahead. You go first.
Commissioner, I'm on the floor first, so I have a few concerns with this. I mean, shouldn't this require a supermajority vote, so we can vote on it? We have residents that are cued to speak on this item. I think they're-
We're giving them two days.
Commissioner? Hear me out. I made it most, this doesn't require a supermajority or anything, I'm taking chair discretion to terminate a meeting. You could take board discretion to contest, to what? You can appeal my decision, thank you. You can appeal my chair decision. My chair decision does not require a supermajority, because I made it myself, and I saw an absolute discretion. You can appeal that decision, and then if you have a second, you guys can all vote on it. If four of you vote to appeal my decision, it rescinds it, and we just go back to having a meeting on Thursday, and I'll see you Thursday morning at 9:00 a.m. If you do not want to appeal it, then I do not need a supermajority or anything, because as chair, I can do anything, up to and including, apparently, adjusting meeting schedules based upon my blue piece of paper. But feel free to appeal it, if you want to appeal it, and you want to come in here on Thursday.
Then I appeal, and here's why.
I need a second before we have a conversation about it.
Can I get a second? Second for an appeal to this?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
Okay, good. Yeah, and here's why. On a lot of points, I agree with you, but at the end of the day, we're seven independent board members that deserve a vote, and for all this talk about people having their voices heard and all this stuff by some commissioners, I think, we can't just cancel a meeting over fear. And no one's voted yet. I'm not broadcasting votes until I hear from staff, and we have a discussion at that meeting. And I understand your fear and all the points you've made, I really do, coming from a district that has had poor representation, but people deserve to have their voices heard. They deserve to be able to come in and speak on this issue, and we deserve, as a board, to hear it. I mean, how many times have we held meetings, or it's just been back and forth, and nothing gets done? And I think the public deserves to have input. I think by canceling the meeting, the, what we're saying is effectively, the chair doesn't like something, I mean, I'm not saying this about you in particular, Mr. Chair, but if a chair doesn't like something, they can just cancel the meeting, and I just think, granted, that's a power you might have, but it's a dangerous precedent. I think we should still hold the meeting, we should give the public their ability to offer input, and seven commissioners can come in and opine in on what their votes are going to be on certain issues, but I just don't think this is a good precedence for us to silence our constituents, irrespective of what the threat, which is real to us, is. I just can't support that.
Just to remind you, if we show up and vote no, then these things go away permanently.
I understand.
And it ends it, whereas if you vote yes, then we run the risk that we're running, so that you're, by having the meeting, you're putting yourself in a pretty big bind of termination of any future discussions on wetlands or not.
No.
Commissioner Felton's on the board, though.
I appreciate what Commissioner Sadiq said. I agree, there's many, many people who are looking forward or whatever with this vote. It is the truth. I have a great understating of this, and I highly expected for Chairman Cruz to take this action. We've riled up the troops, we all, and you're right, I've been there, and it was a very hard decision for me. We have two at-large commissioners. If we lose one, we got another one. But my district went without a county commissioner for eight months. My district has, I mean, I was at DeSantis's press conference. Apparently, I didn't get the memo that we weren't supposed to be there. My predecessor, and now one of my constituents, was there. He's been appointed before. He could be appointed again. I can't break the law, and this is what the law is right now. However, maybe, again, instead of thinking about the things that we can't do, there are things that we can. Last I heard, Hernando County is, we brought to the board another alternative, and that, well, we have many alternatives. We've got Tal that suggested that Johnston and Stewart, our lobbyists, work on this. Maybe they weren't so successful last time, but giving it a shot again. Florida Association of Counties, thousand friends of Florida. The city of Deltona did just join the lawsuit. As far as I know, there are 16 municipalities involved in that as of today. This is, well, if we could verify it, I'm working on doing that for y'all. I think it presents an option to us, where it's a legal thing. That's the great thing about our democracy, is if we don't like a law, then we have a means to appeal it, a legal means to appeal it, that should not jeopardize us. Maybe this can be something, I do understand that our county attorney has looked through this lawsuit, you've spoken to the people putting this together, I think there's going to be a great upheaval with the public. Even people who sponsored 180 are now thinking about its ramifications. I don't want to see any of us put in a position of jeopardy of, I think we have a great balance board up here. I think, I'm very glad you brought this up, and that you've said, "Let's cancel the meeting, so we don't put ourselves in that position." But I also agree with Commissioner Sadiq, that we really need to hear from our public on this, and make sure they understand, we're not being cowards, we're not being threatened by bullies, we're doing the right thing in the right way, and we're going to do the legal thing that we can do to change things. So I'd like to still have the meeting, and have a robust discussion on joining this lawsuit. And maybe in the meantime, we could find out some other information about other counties. I'm not sure when Hernando County is joining in with it. Last I heard, we were 16 involved. They could be smaller municipalities. I know City of Deltona just voted on their participation yesterday. So, let's not, I agree that we shouldn't vote on this particular thing, because even that can make us subject to ethics violations by holding a meeting to vote on an illegal action. So, maybe we just change the scope of it, and instead of thinking about the things that we can't do, we think about and work on some of the things we can, if we could get some of that information together on this lawsuit in the meantime. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to make sure everyone's clear, to go along with what Commissioner Felton said, like, I've been talking to the county attorney, I've been talking to Tallahassee. I was just on the phone with two different representatives yesterday. I do know a draft bill has been filed for next session already with modifications. We've agreed to go along with Pascoe's language, I know Volusia County has put in language for fact. We're supposed to be, or we are talking to a couple of counties, I've passed a couple of names over, county names, over to the county attorney, who's looking, she's looking into that. She's also in conversation with the attorney down in Fort Lauderdale. So we're going full bore on this thing, from independent conversations to potential lawsuits to you name it. Like I said, I'm looking out for the good of this board. I voted to not gut the wetlands the first time. I made three motions to try to get rid of 2-1-2 last time. We all collectively, 7-0 for the 2-1-2-8, and 6-1 for the wetlands, voted to transmit. Nobody in Manatee County does not believe that we, as a collective board, want these things to happen, but we still have to go within the confines of the law of the state or the interpretation of the law of state until that can be better clarified. I just don't want to try to appease a handful of people that are loud about this, that say, "Just do it." There are people that are literally like, "Risk getting thrown out of office to prove a point." Like, but what point? Outside of your Schattenfreud attempt at getting a few extra clicks on something, like, you're not, that is not going to remove the wetlands. If you told me that by throwing myself out of office, I would fix the wetlands and permanently stop F dab, I'll just walk out the door. I will do that voluntarily, but that's not the option on the table. The option on the table is 15 minutes of good news until the next day, when there's a press conference that says that we're removing or suspending a majority of your board. Here's KVO and Satcher and Jennings and April, welcome. Oh, and now they're a majority, so now they can pick their chair, and now let's start unwinding everything. This is not Manatee County's best interest, and guess who's going to be blamed a week later when they destroy things? The very people who allowed that to happen by allowing themselves to be taken off of this board are ultimately going to be blamed for the very, that very thing. That's not in our best interest, and I have to, and we have to, look out for the collective best interest of Manatee County. And right now, if it was going to be, "Let's go to, let's go to battle in court over it", 100%, that's what we wanted to do. I believe we are right. I've written about it, I've dug into it, but I am not going to have anyone on this board suspended over a token vote that has no actual implications on Manatee County. So that's why I moved to cancel that meeting. There's now a motion to-
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Real quick, it's either or, but there's an item I have on Thursday with regard to a forced main easement.
That's a technicality, though. We can just do that after this. If the meeting gets canceled right now, then we'll just quickly run through, yours is a technicality.
Yeah, it's a technicality issue, but it is holding up people closing on their homes.
Understood. But anyway, we do have a motion. It doesn't sound like it's going to be, it's going to matter anyway. There's a motion to continue that, or still to have the meeting on Thursday, and, what? I keep forgetting the word you said.
The existing is an appeal of your ruling.
There's a motion to appeal my decision by Commissioner Sadiq, seconded by Commissioner McCann.
Procedureal motion. Procedureal motion.
I withdraw the appeal, then.
You're withdrawing the appeal?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Right now, there's no appeal, so the decision is to terminate the meeting on Thursday, unless somebody else wants to make a new motion to appeal my decision.
Can we have a discussion on the options?
I will also withdraw my second. I'm very glad that, you know, everybody looked at this from a good perspective, because I have an ethics opinion that says if we vote, we can be held accountable, and we can be removed.
Why don't we schedule, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
The other thing I want to say is, I'm very glad you got this in a roundabout way.
That was terrible.
That was bad.
Okay.
Bad jokes.
Okay. So if no one's appealing it, then that's what we're doing. Commissioner Ron, would you like to quickly throw your thing out there? I mean, it's basically a Scribner error based upon a mistake.
It's a Scribner error. Basically, what it is, is that there's an easement on private property for a forced main. We do these easements all the time. It just allows our vehicles to get to the forced main over a private property, over, it's several feet, it's not even like a mile long or anything, it's ridiculous, but it's a Scribner's error, and with, what's approving the easement would allow, allow the COC, it would allow people to close on their homes, you know, their homes are done, they're just waiting to close on them. And what I'm looking for is a motion to approve the easement, I think Charles Matt-
You need to make a motion to add this to the agenda with a supermajority vote first. So make a motion.
Okay, what I do is make a motion to add this to the agenda with a supermajority vote.
All right. There's no members on the board. It's a motion, it's something that's already on Thursday's agenda. If we cancel Thursday, then we're stuck.
Yeah.
So it was put on, and it was put on time on Thursday's agenda, but obviously not on today's agenda. It's getting moved due to the lack of an agenda on Thursday.
So my motion is to add this to the agenda with the supermajority of the board.
Again, this is just a motion to have this discussion. Motion by Commissioner Ron, seconded by Commissioner Felton. Some computers are shut down, we'll do this verbally. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Both.
And it's 5 to 1, so that is approved with a supermajority vote because Bearden's not here, correct? With Commissioner Bearden absent. 5 to 1 with Commissioner McCann in opposition and Commissioner Bearden absent. Okay, so now make your motion.
What I do is take the item from Thursday's agenda and put it on to this agenda. I don't have, I don't have the motion in front because I thought we were meeting on Thursday.
The motion itself is to accept your court summary until you can maintain your campaign on December 11th.
Yeah. Thank you. That's the motion.
A second.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Ron, seconded by Commissioner Phelps. There's nobody in the room. I'll open a public comment. I will close public comment. No one's on the board. We can do this verbally. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Is approved 6 to 0, Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, sir.
My opposition was based on the agenda.
Commissioner Ron made the motion.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that. Understood.
Mr. Chair, who?
Yeah.
Commissioner Phelps was the second.
It was Commissioner Ron and Commissioner Phelps on both those motions. First one was 5 to 1 with Bearden absent, Commissioner McCann in opposition, second one was 6 to 0 with Bearden absent.
Chairman Cruz?
Yes, ma'am.
How would I need to address the possibility of discussing the lawsuit and our update on that?
I have asked the county attorney to look into putting that on September 2nd agenda. Didn't we talk about that?
September 2nd?
That's the next agenda meeting.
Okay, do we have any, I wasn't sure if there were some deadlines with that as far as when it was going to be filed.
Well, I know Lake County is voting on whether or not to join on August 26th. Orange County, I believe, is also October, August 26th. I've been speaking to commissioners in both of them, so by September 2nd, we'll start having a better handle. The one you're referring to in Fort Lauderdale was just by early September, he wants to know and wanted at least a minimum 10.
And I thought Hernando was this week.
Possibly. I didn't look into Hernando. I know some of the other...
Has Pascoe mentioned anything about joining in?
I haven't talked to him. I'm going to be seeing some people next week at Affordable House and Conference, so I'm just going to talk to some people.
Could I just, could I mention one thing? I'm going to be out at the next meetings. I'll be out all week. I'm matron of honor at my sister's wedding and I don't want to sit on the phone when I should be helping her with stuff. So, if it's possible to do it on the 16th, I'd prefer to be present, but if it needs to be, if it needs to happen sooner, if it needs to happen sooner, I understand.
We wouldn't notice it in time. But that said, we are moving forward, we are moving forward with some things and people do need to understand, the reason, Commissioner Phelps, if someone does ask, the reason these were even on this Thursday is because of state statute, which says, once you get comments back of a transmittal, you have 180 days to make a final vote or it disappears. It's withdrawn. That runs out November 3rd, I think it is, before that month's thing. So, originally, staff had one of these September land use, one October land use. We were going to be one person short for the September land use, possibly one person short for October. That's why the whole decision was, let's just throw it on this Thursday to make sure there was a full board. There was no rhyme or reason to this. So, by not having this meeting, these are still valid. There's still an opportunity now in November 3rd. If we get some, if an attorney opines on something or something else, to bring these back and they're valid. If we vote no, they go away and then we have to go all through the whole process of planning commissions and transmittals. So, this just buys us more time to see if anything can develop in the interim. Okay? If there's nothing else?
Well, can I?
Yes, ma'am.
Just really quickly, because it was...
You're killing me.
Because it was brought up, I just want to make sure everyone understands that the direction that the board has given, staff does still need to appear on Thursday and technically open the public hearings, announce the continuances and allow for members of the public to come and make comment, but board members...
But their comments are exclusive to the continuance.
Exactly. Their comments are exclusive to the continuance itself. They can comment on that. Commissioners don't need to appear, but that's the way it would handle procedurally. I just wanted to make sure everyone on the board understood that.
Understood.
Thank you, sir.
All right. We are adjourned.